Good evening and welcome to the Brockton School Committee Finance Subcommittee Meeting, date Tuesday, 4th, 5:00 PM. We are in the prom little. We do have a few members that are on Zoom capabilities. We're loud. All this. We'll call. Holmes.
Here.
Chairman, Mayor Sullivan.
Beck.
Here.
Sullivan.
Yeah.
Present, Mrs. Oliver.
Yeah.
Sullivan.
Yeah.
Representative Vega. And Dr. Cobb's as the Secretary for the School Committee is present. Now, prior to starting, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening. We've established our quorum. Today is our Finance Subcommittee Meeting to craft our budget for FY '25. First off, before we start, I would like to thank Dr. Cobb's and the executive team for working very hard to put these numbers together with Trish and Troy, TJ. We meet weekly with the mayor and other city officials to make sure that all these numbers add up and we are properly funding the school district. Dr. Cobb's, I will defer to you and we can commence our budget hearings for FY '24, '25.
Okay, thank you. So, the reporter superintendent's recognition, we're going to reschedule for Thursday, the 27th, the two recognitions. So, we'll push those over. So...
Mr. Vice Chair, I think that, I think he's looking at the seven o'clock agenda.
Yeah, you're looking at, yeah.
5:00 PM agenda. That's for the regular school committee.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Let's go. Thank you. So, the first part of our meeting will be an update from Open Architects with TJ Plant.
TJ, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thanks, Mayor.
Floor's yours.
You're on the right page.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna do a quick presentation on the FY '24 end of year projection and go through some of the numbers for the committee to take a look at and ask questions. So, let me, hopefully I can share my screen.
One second.
So, this is the high level. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Alright, so this is the latest and greatest high-level breakdown of the projection for the end of year for fiscal '24. And now, the projection, as you know, from January's projection, it was a $19 to $25 million potential deficit. We have better information now. It's still been a challenge to try to hone in on the numbers because of the lack of encumbering funds has made it a challenge for some of the larger account, the larger contracts. New accounts have been created. There's unknown invoices that still are coming in, even though the district has been doing a great job paying the bills as of late to make sure that we're getting more accurate numbers for the projection. Just to put it in perspective, for the month of May, for the general fund alone, 6.19 million of invoices or purchase orders were created. And for all funds, 7.7 million were created. Now, Dr. Cobb, I don't know if it makes sense to start with the detail and then get to the bigger number, or start with the bigger number and then get into details if there's questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'll do the detail just to kind of tell the story of kind of where we were and where we're going and how we got there. So, what you have before you tonight is the revised budget for fiscal '24. That's the best number that we have from UNIS. You have the original projection in column G in January that was our best thinking in January, what we thought we knew to be true and knew to be true and things that have changed since and decisions that have been made since then. And then, column H is the updated projection and column I is the variance. And then, you have a notes column to try and explain where things may have veered off. If the number goes up from our projection, that just means it's gonna be, it's heading towards against the surplus, towards a deficit. If it goes down, that means it's helping solve any potential deficits. And you'll see throughout this, numbers have changed or fluctuated. That is not uncommon for a situation like this where, you know, decisions have been made, changes have been made, staffing has been, you know, had any trouble with staffing or making decisions about staffing that happened. So, I'm gonna go through in some details. Stop if you have questions, I guess, is the best way, or keep them to the end. But, so I get it by the object code level and I'll go through kind of, you know, each one, just kind of talk about, you know, you can see the projection, you can see it's gotten up slightly for the full-time salaries there, not much. Administrative supervisors, that's the principals, assistant superintendents, deputy superintendents. We've got clarity in some of the projections that we had there as well. That's gone up. Teachers slightly gone down from what we have, but we went, made sure that we looked at all the 199 expenses to try to clean up the 199 account as we headed to fiscal '25. Other salaries that I believe, excuse me, substitutes make sense as going up because this is when a teacher wasn't available, that more substitutes were put into the schools to try to assist. Other salaries, that is really where special ed salaries were hitting for a little while. We're still doing some more investigating as to why it's gone up, but they only budgeted 1.5 million and they're spending roughly 4 million, 400,000, excuse me, a month. So, that makes sense and that can be, make sure we adequately, we adequately budget for it for '25. These other smaller related are just, I mean, I will do the small numbers, but, you know, custodians, you can see they're up from our original projection based on 399,000. And that's, you know, my virtue of just having better data and making sure that they're assigned proper locations. Security, this is, you'll see a two lines for security. Security is definitely part of the overall strategy that the school committee asked to have, increase security in schools. You'll see it's up 209,000. Our professionals is down, 544,000. Originally, we, our projection was off because of bi-weekly versus weekly payroll, but we refined the projection, so that's a savings towards the overall budget. You'll see here, another increase in security guards. Again, this tracks well with the priorities of the school committee based upon, at least the meetings I have been in attendance and sitting on. Overtime, you know, I think wishful thinking of shutting off overtime, you know, was something that we were hopeful for, but we were, in reality, spending's gonna be around 436,000. But you gotta remember, 1.6 million was originally budgeted. So, it increased from our projection by 265,000, but that tracks because of the contracts and what's contracted required for overtime. Workers' comp, that's just trending up. That is employees that get hurt on the job. Unemployment is trending down, which should make sense because if there are any layoffs or folks that left service that filed for unemployment, then that would naturally go down every year or two as it expires. Then you get into the special ed and you'll see there's massive fluctuations because there's a lot going on in the special ed department that I'm sure we can get into or certainly the cabinet can get into. We had some drops in the collaborative programs because that's paid upfront, increases in the day school and residential placements, drop in home hospital, which is hard to budget for, so we're gonna keep an eye on, you know, that for fiscal '25. A drop in occupational day. This is by the district electing not to continue with a Southeastern After Dark and Southern Solid Community College as it relates to that, and it's fully budgeted at 2.3. It's important to note, all OTPS in this, and I'll show you at the bottom, is considered fully 100% spent. And so, if it comes in under their appropriation, then it's gonna go to the surplus. If it's invoices we don't know about it, then it's gonna go towards a deficit. So, we're still in flux, but we're, you know, a week into January, so hopefully, or June, rather, hopefully, we're in pretty good shape. You'll see there were a number of positions that were... A number of positions, like, you know, there was a strategic hiring process that was put into place, and so you'll see some of the assumptions that were made here where their employees were not mat-filled and reduced overtime, and so for, those are deliberate actions to create savings to bring the deficit down. There's a salary statement in bus drivers, most likely due to the time it takes to find, hire, and bring them onboard. This, a lot of term, assuming like most bus companies, as Brockton's experiencing a fair amount of turnover in their drivers. Those are small ones we can get into. Then we get into the non-mat, and this is what, I'll show you the overall number, but this is where the, as you'll see, another big driver from SPED and transportation are two big drivers, and there's a thing you'll see in a presentation later that, you know, there's the number of students that are coming in that are eligible for transportation. So, you'll see big increases, you see some decreases. Some of it was transferred off to circuit breaker. And so, overall, we are projecting, so if you look at, if you look at the purple, which is the net school spending number, the 319 to the projection of 227, and then the non-net's 15.3 million to 19.8 is the projection. That has come down since our last projection, as you may recall. A lot of decisions have been made by the cabinet, the school district, the leadership and everyone. You may recall that originally in January, they were looking to fill 150 vacancies at roughly $75,000 per vacancy. That did not come to fruition. That was a decision saying, well, we can't afford the positions to fill the vacancies. So, you'll see in the original projection, it's not, it's there, and the revised projection, it's not. We are still assuming that in the next few days or week, we will know what the incentive payouts, vacation payouts, sick payouts, and severance payouts, so we assume that that is gonna hit. The average of the last three years is 2.1 million, so we feel comfortable going with that number. So... Overall, there's still a deficit of 9.7 million dollars in UNIS as it relates to this, but you recall that we've been talking about all the different funding sources that are available to BPGS to try to offset the deficit. And so, recently, Trish and her team reclassed, they haven't showed up, no reason it's not off this list yet, is haven't showed up in payroll for this report, but they reclassed 5.1 million off the general fund onto SRR3, so that freed up 5 million. They held at that point 9-plus million in OTPS, but we brought it down to 8 million and change because we were double accounting for, hold on, we were double counting for some payroll encumbrances. Payroll encumbrances aren't uncommon if you encumber payroll, but there were about 981,000 worth of payroll encumbrances that we had already factored into our projections, our salary projections, so we brought that down to make sure we weren't double counting nearly a million bucks. We're still looking into this DD overtime, the police department overtime, there's just, this pulled up and kind of jumped out at us as an outlier that we want to investigate a little bit more, but in our project, it would be additional 275 in police overtime as we figure out who belongs and what budget where they go. We are factoring in, we do not factor in grant deficits, we're working with Trish closely on that, and we're factoring in all the prior year bills, all the invoices and the lease contracts that we're aware of. And as of now, on the net school spending side, there is a projection of a $2.6 million potential surplus. So, this could change, up or down, as this month comes to a close and bills continue to hit. But I just wanna say, considering where we were in September and again in January, there are a lot of hard work has been done by the BPS and the city team, working together to try to figure out how to address the challenges. And yes, there's one-time revenue, solve the problem, so, and Desi's full aware of the approach and everything else, so, but I just wanna highlight the hard work that the entire team did in order to get to the point where you could have had a potential deficit and now you have a potential surplus that you could carry forward into fiscal '25. My last piece of the conversation is the non-net. Unfortunately, at this point, we were projecting an 8.5 million dollar surplus, deficit, excuse me. The original appropriation was 11.2, and then it goes up to 19 million. Circuit breaker was, the rest of the circuit breaker, the 4.9 was put on the table to help address the deficit. Community schools is a non-net school spending eligible program as it relates to outside, you know, everyday student learning. And so, the city side has a 4.1 million dollar potential deficit that I know I spoke with CFO Troy Clarkson about numerous times, and he can address, you know, where the city is in terms of being able to absorb and take care of that deficit from fiscal, potential deficit for fiscal '24. And I leave this here, and this will be probably heavily debated, but there's 1.2 million dollars in school choice revolving revenue available, and it needs to be determined if this is, could be non-net or could be net, should be non-net, should be net, and that is something I would leave to the body to make decisions on. So, here's just a little look at it at a high level. I think it is a good news story, generally speaking, you know, and I know, you know, the greatest year trying to muddle through, but, you know, the team came together and figured it out. With that, I'll take any questions you may have. I don't know if this is too much and you want me to send it to Dr. Cobb's to be sent out to everybody to digest it for another meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that that was presented prior to FY '25's budget being presented shortly.
Thank you, TJ. Mrs. Campbell, if you could just reflect that Representative Vega did join us, thank you. Thank you, TJ. I'll open up to any questions to any of the members. Mr. Sullivan?
TJ, you still there?
Yeah.
Can you tell me what the chapter 70 money is for Brockton for fiscal '24?
Oh, yeah, you're gonna give me one second. I, it wasn't, yeah, let me, give me a minute and I can pull that up for everyone.
So, it was 219,868, sorry, 219,868,010 for 2024, chapter 70.
What happened?
That was the net spending. I'm sorry.
What's 314, what happened with that?
Well, that's, that's before you get to the net, 314 is what you started with and then we went down with...
I'm trying to figure out what the deductions are.
Yeah, so the charter, he can put that up, that's the charter schools and all the other schools that we have to pay tuition for, for students. Southeastern Charter School, New Heights, et cetera.
It's almost $100 million.
Yeah, well, that's why we end up with a net of, you know, 219 or whatever the net school spending is when you start with the initial, but, you know, he can give you the actual, so you want the very top and then what it starts out with. Okay.
TJ, are you able to break down the actual number, starting at 314 with all the deductions?
Yeah, if you can give me one second to pull off my net school spending, our calculations. I think that's what the... impression was correct.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, sorry, just forgive me, I'm just trying to find the right version of what we presented latest for the school committee. I think I had it, so let me share what I have. So, this is what we've shared in the past. Column B is just us trying to get a handle on how I hide that. Making sure we calculated, you know, the numbers, so the enrollment for '24 was 16,619. Foundation budget was 295. Required contribution was 54.5 by the city, and chapter 70 was 241 and change. And then, you get into the rest of charter tuition. This, charter tuition, school choice, special education assessment, municipal cost in support of schools, the attendance, 9,500 that we've updated. Maintenance, we are still in the process for, well, '24, I think '24 has kind of gone on this one, but for '25, the schedule 19 is gonna be a discussion that the city and the schools are gonna have. Pension contributions and health insurance are the big ones, and then you get to the overall numbers of the appropriation. Is there any other question?
It comes down to 215, 25, 616?
215 was the number for '24. I believe it got up to, I wanna say... Finding sources. It got up to a revised budget of 219, and that's the number that we've been working off of as 219,868,010, and 11,245,147 was the final after everything is added up and headed down for a total of 231,113,157. And that's where we're at for fiscal '24 budgeted. I'll show it shared in case you need to see it.
TJ, could you say what the surplus is for 2024 again? It was confusing, looking at on the screen.
Yeah, so, when everything was said and done for the budget, um... This is the final revised budget that we're operating on, it is 219,868,010 for FY '24 revised budget, plus 11.2 actual appropriation from the city council for a total of 231.1. You see our projection is 227.5. It's a $7 million deficit as of now, and then you'll see the deficit for non-net at 8.5, but 19.8 is the total projected spending. 7.6 is here on line 7, the starting point of the deficit, adding in 2.1 million for the incentive payouts, taking out 5.1 for SRR to help address the general fund deficit, taking out the 8,93,000 and change for the held, the decision to hold spending, to free up this money to be able to address the deficit. And then, we're tracking this 275, trying to do some research, and then we know we have 1.1 of pending bills that are not encumbered.
So, the 2.6 is a surplus?
2.6 is the, yeah, projected surplus as of now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. TJ, I just wanna thank you and your team, Jen and Larissa, and of course, the Vice Chair, Dr. Cobb's and his cabinet, and on the city side, Troy Clarkson and Evan and Solicitor Bridges, and of course, Trish as well. And, I mean, we've been doing this for months now, right? Sometimes once a week, sometimes three times a week, sometimes weekends. So, if you would talk to me five months ago, I'd say the state would be in here right now on a take-o. So, yeoman's work by a lot of people, really, really, really good job. My question would, I think, would be to Troy Clarkson. Troy, relative to the projected, now, we're not even talking about '25 here, we're talking about '24, in terms of the non-net, it's, it looks like 4.125350 deficit. Could you just explain to everybody how that's gonna be covered and, so that we can be whole going into the next budget?
Certainly through you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, members of the school committee. As I've stated at meetings similar to this for several months now, we've been tracking both the school expenses and the city expenses. And so, we anticipate on the city side, right now, a surplus of budgeted but unspent funds in the neighborhood of $10 million. So, our plan is to seek a transfer from the city council prior to June 30th. President, City Council President Moses Rodriguez has been, participated in some of our meetings, so he's aware of this, and so we'll seek a transfer from those funds that are budgeted but unspent, mainly police, fire, and snow and ice, from those city budgets to non-net school spending to cover that deficit. Related to that, obviously, that will, any transfer that we make from the city's budget to the, either the school budget or non-net out of a surplus is money that will not be available for free cash and won't be available to address any issues next year. So, with that, I strongly advocate, and as TJ mentioned, there is some flexibility with that school choice money, that I would urge the school committee to allocate that money to address the transportation deficit, and that would thereby reduce the amount of a transfer that the city would once again have to make to, to address that deficit. So, I know we'll talk about fiscal year '25 in a bit, and obviously, the budget, as I've mentioned before, the budget that's been submitted to the city council is in balance. But because we've drained our reserves and have very little free cash on hand, every dollar helps, and if we need to be prepared for the unknown for next year, then retaining as much as we can to address future challenges, including potential non-net costs in '25, I think that the soundest and most fiscally responsible strategy is to keep that non-net deficit around $3 million. I've not yet filed the transfer order awaiting this meeting to see exactly what that number's going to be.
Mr. Clarkson, can you just define again? I get the snow and I... I get the snow and ice because we expected it to be kind of a bad winter. We were fortunate, right? We avoided that, so we have some cost savings there in terms of what you said about the police. So that's budgeted but unspent retirements, people that have left unfilled positions, right? I mean, that's, that's, all that is equaling up to what we're going to have?
Correct, so the approximate numbers, the police and fire departments both have approximately 200 sworn personnel. And in any given year, that you have people that leave, retirements, people that transfer to go other places. Those positions are fully funded for an entire year. So those departments generally accumulate surpluses every year. Smaller departments do as well, but because their budgets are much smaller, the actual dollar amounts that are available is not as large. And so because the police and fire budgets are both in the neighborhood of $30 million apiece, it gives us the flexibility to use those savings for other purposes.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members with any questions from Representative Vega?
I don't know if this is for Troy or TJ, but so as I've been ramping up my understanding of net spending versus non-net spending, I understand that we have a penalty if we don't spend all of our non-net spending, correct? Is there any penalty for being in a deficit situation with non-net spending? Or is the magic number zero?
I'm not aware of any penalty that exists other than a penalty to the city budget because we're required to meet any deficits.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Azak? I was going to get to that.
No, no, I see the chat.
So I'm going to the floor first, and then I'll get to Zoom. Mrs. Oliver or Mrs. Sullivan, any of you have a question?
I have a quick question for TJ. For the FY '24, would you have agreed for the number that the school committee had voted for the budget of, for FY '24? Or would you have wanted them to go a little bit higher? If you heard what they asked back then?
A difficult question to answer because I wasn't there to...
In your opinion?
Exactly what was happening, but, I mean, it's one of those. I think we had to get through and solve fiscal '24's issues and deal with what we, as a group, inherited. And I think fiscal '25, you'll see addresses many, but not all of the school department's needs. And I don't know if that's a wishy-washy answer, but that's probably, that's why I can answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from any members? All right, we'll move on. Dr. Cobb's? Thank you, TJ. Thank you, Vice Chair.
I'll be here if you need me.
Okay, thank you, TJ. So the next up is the fiscal budget '25 discussion preparation with the city chief, CFO, Troy Clarkson. Your schedule will be next week and do our presentation afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This portion of my presentation will be brief because I think the meat of your discussion at this meeting is on the proposed FY '25 budget for the schools, which I know Trish and her team, including TJ, have put tremendous effort into presenting. So the bottom line for your proposed budget right now matches exactly what the mayor submitted to the city council for net school spending for next year. And so those figures have been in sync for some time now, and that is the result of a lot of work. But the city's proposal to fund net school spending matches the budget that you will consider tonight. As I've discussed here in this room several times, the requested budget for next year for non-net school spending is a little over $19 million. Right now, the city is recommending an appropriation of $18 million. But as I just stated a few minutes ago, there is a process in place that if at sometime during next fiscal year, if it looks like the costs for transportation and other net, non-net costs are exceeding that $18 million, then we have mechanisms in place to address those overages. But I continue to believe that there are additional efforts that can and should be made. I'll call your attention back to that school committee meeting back at the Arnoen a few months ago, when we talked in very specific terms about strategies that could be employed to contain costs. I still believe very firmly in those recommendations that I made to you and believe that there's some improvements can be made to reduce some costs. So bottom line, the city is increasing its appropriation from $11 million to $18 million. And we obviously stand here willing to work with the schools if those costs exceed that to address them at that time. But those are the numbers that are recommended to the city council. As you all know, they've set aside an entire night to have the opportunity to discuss with all of you both the net and non-net numbers for next year. And we'll all have an opportunity to have that discussion with the city council in a couple of weeks. So from our perspective, I think that Trish and her team have done a phenomenal job to bring a level of detail and accountability to this budget that they can present it to you. And we'll be standing alongside Dr. Cobb's and Trish before the city council to answer any questions that they might have. But I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair, that you or your colleagues might have.
Thank you. I'll open up the floor to any questions to any members.
Mr. Vice Chair, just through you, just point of information. I concur with what you just said, Mr. CFO. Case in point, the $11 million that was authorized last year. I was in the room when you said if there needs to be a supplemental transfer appropriation, if that does not meet it, you would do that. That's what you're doing with the 4.1 that we just talked about. I will also say, and the Vice Chair has been on many calls with Dr. Cobb's, Lieutenant Governor is going to be working with us. So we did dodge, thankfully, state intervention. We will not have a fiscal control board for this year, thank God. But Lieutenant Governor Kim has suggested a big brother, big sister type of concept, a mentor. Whoever he or she is will be working with us, with Brockton Public Schools, with the city to track all the spending on a quarterly basis. We all will be reporting back to Secretary Gorkowitz, EOE, Secretary Tutwiler, and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, and eventually the governor. So I do echo sentiments you said. I want people to understand we are not suggesting in any way underfunding schools. Absolutely not, we won't. But we also have to do cost containment measures because we cannot deal next year with what we're dealing with this year because there will be a takeover, and that's a fact. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Any other members with any questions for Mr. Clarkson? Mrs. Sullivan or Ms. Oliver, do you have a question for Mr. Clarkson?
Sound a clarify, I was at 19 million or 18 million, Troy?
The number that's in the city council's proposed budget for non-net spending is $18 million.
And what are some of the mechanisms that you guys have implemented so we don't get into the same issues of last year?
So as I stated a few minutes ago, and I will, the mayor is correct in characterizing. At the beginning, prior to the beginning of this fiscal year, the request for non-net was a little over $14 million. And we agreed to fund it at $11 million with the understanding that if the cost exceeded that, that we would seek additional funding from the city council, which is what we're now doing. That hopefully, three, perhaps four million dollar transfer that we'll be seeking before the city council. So that mechanism will be in place next year. If, hopefully earlier than this point next year, but if we're in the spring next year and see that the transportation costs are looking to exceed $18 million, then we will seek a transfer from the city council to address any of those shortages.
Are you all set, Mrs. Oliver?
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Mr. Vega followed by Mr. Sullivan.
And just as a point of clarification, Vice Chair, are we, at this point, are we like getting into the details that were visible in the FY '25? Or are we still in a different stage of the conversation?
Whatever questions that you have for Mr. Clarkson.
Yeah, because some of this may be Mr. Clarkson's questions. Some of this may be, I had the opportunity to ask some questions ahead of this with Dr. Cobb's and the cabinet. It was very illuminating. And, you know, I think some of these questions are worth repeating so the public can know. So one of the things I noticed in FY '25 budget is that we are rightfully spending more on special education. We see it both in terms of operational costs. We see it in terms of part-time. We see it in terms of transportation. What I noticed, though, is that our homeless transport has gone down significantly. And the question that, you know, that leads me to ask is, you know, seeing the transportation costs that we face this year, like, what is the rationale behind the lowered investment in, I believe most of that would be McKinnevento-related costs? What's driving that trend?
I think to answer questions like that, I think Trish Boyer is better equipped to answer those specific questions because she worked with Dr. Cobb's and the school team to put together those specific proposals. So with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll defer to Trish on that.
Yes, Trish. We'll get into the '25 budget when we go through the presentation.
Okay, that's what I meant earlier, but like, is now the time? Okay, yeah, perfect.
Mr. Sullivan?
I don't know if this is for you, Troy, or Trish. It's on the extracurricular activities. Some of the clubs have got requested budget of a dollar in fiscal '25, zero. It's just a little confused. I'm trying to figure out the dollar was just, what, keeping it open? And then in '25, you don't need it at all?
Again, those are specific questions on the FY '25 detailed appropriation. Those questions would be more appropriately directed toward Trish Boyer.
All right. We'll let them, we'll get to that, you know, because we don't want to be pressed for time. Does any member have another question or any comments at this time? Mrs. Sullivan or Mrs. Oliver via Zoom?
I just want to make a comment, and I know I sit on these meetings weekly with no one on the budget. My thing is this, that the committee requested 15 million, cut four. So if it was properly funded at that time, we wouldn't be requesting that 4 million to cover that transportation cost. So we're kind of like back at the same boat. And I know the mayor has the full authority to cut, and the council has on that, on that item. But we just don't want to get back to that same point where the district knows with the leadership of the individuals that run those department, what those figures are. And I know we have to do some cost measures and making sure that number comes down. But when you look at it, we're requesting what was cut. And when it came to that point, that should have been done ahead of time. So not going to go back to it. We just have to move forward, just making sure that we properly fund the school district because this has been going on since I was a little kid, I'm 46. We're still there. Dr. Cobb's, we can move on to the next agenda.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
At this point, I'll let Trish Boyer go over the projections. There's two sheets that you have here. I think you can put those up for the public to see. Put it up for us for fiscal '25 net and non-net spending.
Good evening, everybody.
We'll go into more detail about this with our presentation and then answer your questions. You can ask, like, the president.
So this page is a summary of all of our net school spending items. You can see in the first column is FY '24. The second column is the FY '25 that was presented to the cabinet and Dr. Cobb's. The next column is the superintendent's recommendation. And the column in blue is what the school committee will recommend. Right now, it's just level funded with what we presented to the superintendent. You'll see our net school spending amount is, towards the bottom, is 38,359,312 with an additional 20,000 for travel for out of state. I'm sorry, that was for the ordinary maintenance. And just above that, the total salaries is 188,408,000 plus. So our total on the last line on the bottom, our total net school spending is 226,787,808. That is the original request that was presented to the superintendent. If you want to go to the next page, Tracy, please. This is, this is the summary of the non-net school spending items. And the total salaries is 10,736,000. The ordinary maintenance is 8.8 million for a total non-net school spending of 19,553 plus. Which Mr. Clarkson had mentioned that the city council was presenting the $18 million. So this is where we see the 19.5 versus the 18 million that city council was presented. We weren't, I wasn't planning to go through all of the pages because there's a lot of detail there. So what you will be voting on when you do is the total of the net school spending of 226 million or whatever you propose, and the non-net school spending page of whatever you propose.
Do we have any questions for Mrs. Boyer by any representative?
Just had a quick question on the net, Trish.
Yes.
The bottom line item, right before you got to the total amount, it was 20,000.
Yes.
Can you just, because I'm used to travel department-specific on the city side. Could you just define what that is?
So it's any travel that's out of state.
For anybody with DPS?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Traditionally, it's held on a separate line item. I've never seen it separated like that, but I just left it the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members? Mr. Vega?
Trish, so when we look at the technology line on net school spending, we see, you know, that jump by almost 100%. Like, can you help us understand like some of the, some of the factors that went into that?
Sure, that would probably be better answered by Mr. Vigent from the Director of IT. I would mess that up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dan Vigent. I'm the Senior Director of Technology here in Brockton. And, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So between last year's budget and this year's budget, we see, we see the allocation for technology specific go up by like 100%.
Yeah, so technology, the technology budget and the proposal is split up in three sections. The first being hardware, the second being software, and the third one being contract services. Are you talking about a specific line item or overall?
Overall.
So overall, okay. So the hardware line item went up by almost double because the student laptops, we replace a quarter at a time in a four-year, it's a four to five-year life cycle. But we do that every single year. The staff laptops were all bought during COVID as a wholesale purchase. So four years ago, we bought those. And FY '25, that fleet is coming up for renewal. So you're going to see a line item in FY '25 that you will not see for another four years. That explains that one. Software went up because, software tends not to go up year to year. It's pretty stable, it's mostly renewals. But software went up because the tech services department, which is my department, absorbed the data services department, which is another tech department within the district. When I absorbed that, I also absorbed their line items. So their lineups are in that budget. And one of them is our Infinite Campus System Information System, which is a very substantial line item. And that, that was probably where the largest jump was for software. Contract services, there was a line item, actually, we're going to move that to hardware. There's a $350,000 line item in there that is actually earmarked for an E-Rate Wi-Fi product. So E-Rate is a federal fund governed by the FCC that we apply for every year and receive every year. And in FY '25, we're going to use... And the, in FY '25, we're going to use some of that E-Rate money to replace all our Wi-Fi infrastructure. Again, that's on about a five-year life cycle and we're hitting that fifth year in FY '25 just by chance, but it's a, it's a substantial project. We have to apply a certain portion of our budget to that project. It's about $350,000. The USAC, which is governed by FCC, which controls the E-Rate funds, they're going to be providing us about 2.4 million as a match. So that's where you see the large jumps in all three categories, actually.
I appreciate that answer and I just want to give a shout out to all the IT folks because a lot of times the stuff's invisible and you only notice it when it's not working. So what you just, what was just laid out for folks who don't know is a very comprehensive and also not a radical plan. This is just good maintenance and solid approach year after year. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Spoken like a true tech guy.
That's why I let Dan do that.
Any other members with any questions? Representative Oliver or Mrs. Sullivan via Zoom?
I have a quick, I have a quick question. I'm just looking at the number for, I don't know who can answer this, but at the textbooks and the libraries and professional books, I just see as the year goes by, wages are basically cutting the budgets completely to a point that very soon, we're not going to have any money to even like fund books for our students. And that's really concerning that that is one part of the, like, very important, like we need for our students that we keep cutting every year. So if somebody can answer that question, why we just keep cutting it? We already don't have libraries, we already don't have libraries in any of our middle schools and that's really concerning to me.
Representative Oliver, do you have a page number and line item on that item?
Yeah, I can see their lines 24, 25, and 26.
Sorry, yes. Thank you, sorry.
So that's okay. So for line 25 and textbooks, as you probably are all aware, we're getting away from textbooks. Most curriculum is via software, online, virtual, et cetera. So that makes sense that the textbooks is reducing. We honestly are not spending that much in textbooks. As for the libraries and professional books, the same category, you know, everything is on media nowadays. There's not much physical, you know, books and magazines and things that we need to purchase that we did in the past. Most items are going to software, for instance. And with the instructional supplies, again, what we did was we looked at actual expenditures. So we brought the budget more in line with what actually was spent rather than just taking previous budgets for granted. So we were looking more at actual numbers to come up with these budgets. And I mentioned that before as well. When we were creating this budget, we did take a look at the last few years' worth of spending to come up with this year's budget. So we didn't just assume everything should be level funded. We looked at actual costs and this is what we had come up with or agreed to.
Is that the funding for like the whole school district?
For all of those three lines?
Yes, please.
Yes.
I mean, I think it's very disservice. We have to bring books back, especially to elementary and middle school because I don't think, this is why we're trying to get our kids away from like, you know, electronics and have them focus more on books. I mean, my kids still have books. I still buy books to my kids and I prefer them to read a book than, you know, on electronics. So I think that's something we need to look at. Thank you.
What was yours?
Hi, it's Karen Spalding, Assistant Superintendent. I just wanted to add to that because I was afraid the public would think that we are only reading books online. The other reason why that textbook line item is lower, at least from the elementary perspective, is that when we purchase curricula, we typically do it for a five-year stretch. So when we purchased the Wonders curriculum, for example, very recently, it was a large $2.5 million purchase, but within that contract, with that came hard copies of books, but within that contract is also yearly deliveries of the, what we call the consumables, the reading and writing companion that we have with the, that go with the texts, the readers that we have. So, so it was a big $2.5 million purchase, but that stretches out for five years. So we don't have to keep paying for those materials each year. So I think, and that is very similar with the math books. When we purchased illustrative math, same thing, five years out. That of course means that we have to do some thoughtful planning about what happens five years from now. But that also, I think it explains why you don't need to see a every-year commitment in a textbook line.
Thank you. Anna, are you all set?
Yes, thank you. I just speak to the books at the secondary level too. So to the point of, I agree with school committee member Oliver, our students do need to have books in their hands. And so I just wanted to reassure the public and the committee, StudySync, our purchase of StudySync, much like Dr. Spalding said, we purchased in advance through our GLEAM grant. With that comes actual books that students hold. If you walk in any of our middle school classrooms right now, for example, the term for unit is a novel study. So in all the classroom, students have books in front of them that are culturally responsive, that are linguistically challenging for all of our students. The appropriate scaffolds are in place. So we do have that. Additionally, Jamie Vatonas, our 9 through 12 ELA coordinator, just submitted a proposal to buy PermaBound books for all of our 9 through 12 students to really supplement the development of the ELA curriculum, 9 through 12. So again, students will have actual books in their hands to read. We do have an account with Sora, so students have multiple access for online reading. Some students do prefer that. I still like a hard copy. Anybody that knows me, I'm a paper person. So I just want to reassure the committee and the public that we are absolutely getting books in students' hands. It's just, it's difficult to see that in the line item versus how it's connected to our curriculum work too.
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you.
Mayor Sullivan?
You can just call me Bob. 30, 31 rental leases, Trish. We took a vote last week for facility moves and one of the schools, we actually put on hold, right, the re-engagement center.
Yes.
Is the rental leases in the amount of 292, is that, is that projected? Is that, is that defined as rental lease? Are we talking about, is that all encompassing rental of copy machines, rental, like what does that mean?
It is rental leases of space.
Property, property space.
Yes.
So is that 292 a projection of, and we're going to talk about this at the seven o'clock, the RFP and procurement, but is that 292 projecting to do a, a lease on a property for that purpose?
Which?
The purpose of the re-engagement?
Do you know the address of that?
Well, we're going to be pulling up the bid.
I believe, Mayor, that, that covers the two properties.
It does.
The Foster Street Warehouse and the re-engagement center at the fairgrounds.
That 292 covers that? Okay.
Yes.
And then, thank you. And then on contract services, section 30, it's a little over $5 million. Is that, is that contract services that we're looking at now to, again, procure RFP? I'm just trying to see if there's any mechanism to even get that down lower. I mean, it's a $5 million projection, but is contract services all encompassing as well?
Yes.
Yes, it is. And actually, the 5 million that you mentioned is in the FY '24 column, so the FY '25 column, it went down to 3.5.
Oh yeah, my eyes are terrible, yeah. All right, 3.5. But again, contract services is anything that we have to contract for Brockton Public Schools?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr., you all set, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Representative Vega, followed by Representative Azak.
Let me say, I've already asked once if you want to, if you want to.
Sure, it's just, thank you. Trish, quick question, 27B.
Yes.
Under the guarded school, there's nothing allocated as far as building utilities. It's zero. Now that we're going to have programs back there, that should be revised.
Yeah.
I know it's not a lot, a huge amount of money, but.
We kind of lump utilities altogether. We don't necessarily break it out by building. We, we have a whole, a whole line just for utilities for either gas or oil or, or electricity. So it's not always by building.
But we have it broken down on the sheet, though.
Right. I, I don't know why they did that in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Ms. Vega, you all set?
So yeah, going back to my earlier question before we got into the presentation. So we're seeing more spending in the areas of special ed, transport, part-time employment, operational costs. This all makes sense and is in alignment with what I've understood, you know, our plan to be going forward. I'm wondering, we've also seen a decline in money being invested into, you know, so last year, it looks like we were just shy of $2 million in homeless transport and this year, we're projecting 1.4. Like, is there some different strategy that we're employing that explains why we're investing less in that, in that transport?
Okay, so are you looking on the non-net school?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I just jumped in. I just jumped in on it.
That's okay. All right. So if you look, if you're on the non-net school spending summary page, if you look at line, oh, let's see, well, it's, it's the second line down on page 42. And there's a regular ed homeless transportation and FY '24 was budgeted at 1.4. The next column to the right is also budgeted at 1.4.
Yeah.
So that's level funded.
Wait, did I make this, yesterday I had the number. Oh, I'm sorry, but that's compared against our spending thus far. So we also received a packet that looked at our up to May spending and our up to, as of May 31st, our homeless transport spending is over 1.8 million and, and the June projection is another 165,000. So that's significantly more in the 1 point. I, I appreciate the fact that in '24, we said 1.4, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, so if you look a few lines below that, you'll see a second homeless transportation line and that is budgeted, it was budgeted at 450 in FY '24.
I see.
And 460 in FY '25. So if you add those two together, that comes to over 1.8.
So that homeless, so just so I'm clear, like the homeless piece is not simply McKinney-Vento alone, but it also compensates, it also includes our sped homeless transport as well. And they're seen as two separate lines? Okay.
Yes.
That's the part that was confused. Okay. Okay, so I, what I, when I was looking at the, the breakdown, I attributed that to the sped transport, which I saw it also increase, but that, that made sense to me. Okay, I got it. So really, we are always breaking out trans, homeless transport into sped and McKinney-Vento cases?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But that should be looked at together. Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, and it's very important in terms of making our maintenance of effort, minimum spending calculations to identify anything that's sped for sped.
Appreciate that. Follow-up question, I guess this jumps back to net school spending. So we saw a pretty significant drop in the budget allocated to substitute teachers. So, so in light of, you know, what a lot of the community has been discussing, teachers being absent for prolonged periods of time, classes without teachers for long stretches, what is driving the decision to reduce the projected allocation for, you know, for substitutes?
Yes, so again, that was a line item that I had looked at, the historical spending over the last few years. And what I put in for FY '25, 1.2 million dollars is more in line of what the actual was that we've been spending. And I know yesterday, it was mentioned that it's not always easy to find substitutes. So a lot of times, we're pulling other staff members to cover classroom periods as opposed to getting a full sub for the day. So in light of that, we just brought that budget more into line with what historical spending had been.
I got you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Representative Azak?
Thank you. Ms. Boyer, just a quick question. Page 31, item number three, that lease that we have, I thought the triple net was a lot higher than the 82,000.
That's for the Foster Street Warehouse.
Yes. I mean, this says 82,000, but we really should see the triple net, everything included. I thought we received something like months ago that showed a much higher.
So what do you mean by the triple net?
So.
Utilities and the, for the lease basis.
Oh, that's actually what the cost is because I actually looked at the contract.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Representative Oliver or Mrs. Sullivan via Zoom, any questions?
I'm all set. You want me to start too?
Representative Vega?
I apologize, my chair. Yesterday I had a nice set of notes and questions and, and I, I lost them. So now I'm just working off of scribbles on, on this pad here. So I know a question that'll come up if this budget is passed and goes out to the public is that there's a line item in the, is it in the non-net, is the bus, is the, is the bus purchase within non-net or net?
Just, let's just stay focused on the net and then we'll get to the non-net. I know they, they are intertwined, so this is just.
Make sure.
Because there's a, there's a presentation that's going to be going forward. So my question, well, one of the biggest things that I was a big advocate for was our mentors, where when we look at the budget for FY '24, we had 900,000 allocated. And then for FY '24, it was brought down to 450 and then for some odd reason, because nobody on the school committee actually cut that, it was proposed. And that authority falls with us, our seven members, including the mayor, who are the ones that dictate where those monies go. And if you guys want to see an increase, you just move that money around, just make the motion on the floor. I just hope that everybody understands that. How do we justify knowing that our mentors are vital piece in our schools, in the community, that we are going to slash that to 180, where it was allocated for 900,000? And then the other piece is when we have mentors that's at 180 and then we have the community mentors, FY '23 was 150, '24 was 250, but then it was completely eliminated. These are the programs that we had, the Rose Conservatory, FAM, which is Kenny Montero's and all these outside. Where are we with growing that? I don't know if anybody from the executive team wants to give me any answer because we do get a lot of community members that come and speak before this body and we know we need that. And this body needs to make sure that we send those allocations to the right places to support our students. And number one, it starts in a classroom, but you also need that community to support. So how do we get to those figures? Because I don't want to sit here and vote and move some line item funds to make sure I fund that.
Dr. James LaVilla, Assistant Superintendent of Unified Student Services and the mentoring program, it's the in-district. Brockton Public School Employee Mentors are under my umbrella. So we did make an initial proposal for additional mentors. I think when taken in totality of all of the requests that were being made, given what the budget restraints, we did not see that requests move forward in the budget process. Relative to your second question on the community mentoring, that wasn't my understanding of that pot of money. My understanding is most of those individual contracts that were worked out with the administration, with the previous administration was done through the, another account that was not necessarily reflected. So if we go back into historical spending, none of those contracts, at least to my knowledge, are housed in the community mentoring line. What the difference is between mentors and community mentors, I don't know, as this is a new budget process for us. But what I will say is the district did request, let me rephrase, the Office of Social and Emotional Learning, where our mentoring program lives, did make an additional request for staff. But we originally came in, and correct me, team, if I am mistaken, it happened, I believe, when, but we came in at maybe 10 or 11 million of additional requests and we're told we needed to cut that down to only essentials for levels, level services for going into next year. So all non-level services requests were essentially cut. And the additional requests that we are requesting, which I think we'll get into in the next part of the actual presentation, will explain the additional staff due enrollment growth. I believe deeply in our community mentoring program. We've been working hard with our supervisor to restructure the model, to ensure we have talented and engaged individuals working with our students. talented and engaged individuals working with our students. All feedback has been incredibly positive relative to the mentors that we do have, so I don't want that to be misunderstood with the lack of value in the program, but I think in totality of the educational needs of the district, we were tasked with cutting the additional needs that we were requesting for the students in order to meet level services.
So, so how many, so I'm looking at this, this 180, it's just covering the amount of mentors that we have presently working for the district?
In that isolated office, yes. So we have additional mentors who are not necessarily called community mentors, they're called restorative justice mentors. There aren't a lot of them, there's three of them, and what I've got to make sure of is that we're, that sort of who's in that line is strictly the actual mentors, because what I don't, I don't, I don't believe that the supervisor, for example, is in that line. So, so to be fair, total number of mentors this year going to next is static. If that accounts to 180, I'd have, I'd have to go back and double check, to be fair, I wasn't prepared.
So there's only three. Three, and then you have the, the supervisor, correct?
They're supposed to be, it's more complicated than that. There is, there's, I think there's four. There was supposed to be five, but we had an issue with one person's funding coming through our budget versus the grant. Remember when the year begins, and all of the grant money was frozen, there is a mentor who is a part of the district, who's housed at Promise College and Career Academy, who was supposed to be funded through the bar grant. Because of the grants took so long to get up and running, we were not allowed to add, remember, the, the position control that was put in place on the district's operations, the additional requests for staff were picked back. When we got, when I dug into that line to figure out who is being paid out of this pot of money, it was pulling the supervisor's salary, which my understanding was in a different line, as well as the community ment, the community mentor assigned at Promise, who was supposed to be funded through the bar grant. So in the budget, I think there was actually six or seven. The salary of the, of the supervisor takes up two of those positions, right? So the, in, in terms of community mentors working with kids, what we had envisioned versus what pulled up, rolled out in the fall were two different things. Because of, until we could get a handle on how the money was being booked into the different lines, we were unable to hire, even though we made the argument number of times, like we had in the budget for this many people, until we could sort out the accounting side, we were not allowed to add any positions. So the original idea was, I believe, eight. We could only pay for addition, above and beyond who we actually had, and we also had to take the Center for Restorative Justice, New Beginnings, all of their salaries were coming out of that same line.
So, we have three community mentors, mentors that falls under your umbrella, but your request is actually you would need eight, or is that more, or is that give or less? Because if, you're telling me eight, and I know we need that.
Well, that was what was in the budget going into this year.
Okay.
That's not who we're actually funding, right? So to your point, we don't have, in that line, the people being paid from that budget line were more than what we understood we could afford based on a salary at X amount per year.
Okay, so, correct me if I'm wrong, this 180 is only for three positions that's currently hired, that are currently hired presently today that are mentors, there's only three?
I, I, um, I don't want to confuse the two things, right? Because who we currently have versus what is in the budget are two different things. Because my understanding is we have cleaned up the other people being paid from the, essentially the wrong line, if that makes sense, right? So that's not for three. Their salaries would, that, I'd have to go back and look and see what the agreement was that we worked out relative to when we restructured their roles, which happened this fall. But it would be, that would cover more than three people at 180.
So what, what is this, the salary for?
It's roughly 30 to 40.
30 to 40?
Yeah. It's not 100,000 or 70,000 a person, no.
So your number is eight. I, I, I need to know, like, what you need for mentors? You know, like, what does that, what does that office, like, I know Mr. Lamar, he's not here, he runs that office, but what is his magic number for having those mentors? And I know we had some issues with outside mentors, but we know, as the members that get the calls, that we had some community mentors that were, the unbelievable program that was completely gutted out. I'm not saying that I'm going to sit here and say, you got to pick this one or pick that and bring them in, but if you're telling, you know, what I'm hearing now is that we have three, but you are looking for eight, so what does that eight equate to, like, what their salary is? Because I'll be honest with you, I'm...
I'm pretty sure there's four.
There's four.
We hired Chauncey Holcomb mid-year. So that, so once we could get some clarity and clean up, that we were able to add, but remember, the, the control was put in place, that what we, in order to add anybody, there had to be an analysis with this, in partnership with the city, to ensure there was funds in the line. So when the rejection came, that's when we dug deep into who's being paid from that line, which is when we uncovered four additional staff members who were taking salary from that budget line. So I have to go back, to be fair, I'd have to go back and work with finance to see if they actually split out the lines. So I don't want there to be, the, the understanding to be that meant, that mentor line is all we have for mentors, because it's not, right? There's other people that are working, that are in the budget, but not necessarily in that line. But to your, your question is, how many do we actually need? And that is far more than eight. So it's...
What, what does that number look like?
We would, I would argue at least 20-plus, one for every single school, and then multiple for the high school. But again, I, I don't want to, when we made the request of what we, what was necessary to, to meet next year's needs, the, the number that we had requested above and beyond the current appropriation was in the neighborhood of 11 million, right? So the, the conversation then became, what do you peel back? Which is where those requests were eliminated from the conversation.
Okay, so, you're telling me 20-plus, 180 is definitely not enough for 120-plus. My recommendation to this board, this committee, is that 180 revert back to that 350, and make sure that we hire...
That would be a whole different ballgame, yes.
Yeah, that we make sure that we have some mentors.
Just on, on the concept, we'd have to cut another 170 somewhere else to make the mix. Yep.
Trish, and Dr. Cobb's and the team can look at a different line item where we can move and, move that back to the 350 and make sure that we service those. Those are, that's, that's one of the things that we need here, and we have to support our students, and if we don't have no community mentors that is working with the district, that's a huge disservice, because we can't just rely just on the schools to make all the changes, we have to have that community involved in it. So, thank you. Representative Gomes?
I just wanted to piggyback off of that. This is more to double-check myself. So I remember there was a presentation in Arnon that was done, and you mentioned, I believe it was psychologists or people in the area, we needed about 32 to fully be well-staffed, and we only had about eight.
We had nine.
Nine.
Yeah.
Is that still the case?
It is still the case. We still have nine.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Trish, just a question. We were at the Arnon School, we collectively took a unanimous vote to provide the summer programs for kids in Brockton. At that time, we made a pledge, I think it was like 250 grand, 200 grand, something like that.
Yes.
We said that we support that, but we have to make sure that when '25 comes before us, that it's captured in there. So I want to just verify that it indeed is captured in there. And then also, Dr. Cobb's has shared with us many times, at the Goddard School, there's going to be an external elevator constructed, and I just want to make sure that that dollar amount would be captured in FY '25 as well.
So the elevator is not specifically captured in FY '25. I'm not sure that it can be absorbed in the facilities, maintenance, Dr. Cobb, you may have a better answer than me.
That's one of the things that we'll, we'll discuss, but that's, you know, that money that Troy mentioned, that 1.2 for the, the revolving account for school choice, that money is available to use for those projects for the...
About 300 grand for an elevator?
Yeah, at least. It's probably, it's probably more than that, so we need to talk, you know, because I, I have got an estimate, and, and between that and the vestibule at the high school, we're looking at 1.8, Mr. Butler.
So just on the summer programs, is that captured in there?
Yes, it is, on page 41.
Okay.
It's the second line down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sullivan?
Tricia, one question on the one-to-one contracts?
Yes.
We, I know we cut a lot of them. Where, where would they be on this sheet now? The ones that are in place?
Right, so it depends on what they were. For instance, one-to-one nurses are on one particular page, they're spread out throughout the budget, depending on what their job is. So they're not all in one section.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any follow-up questions from any of the members? Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Oliver via Zoom?
Now I'm all set. Go.
Representative Vega?
So, and I'm glad that the mentor conversation happened, it's something that we've been hearing from visitors and, and other members of the community. You know, and another topic that's come up several times is how the district resources EDI, like, in, in these, in, in this budget, like, what, where would, where do we find next year's dedicated allocation for that?
I'd have to actually find it, I don't know off the top of my head.
No, it's, yeah. And that, and that's something we can return to later, Trish, if, if it's...
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Are you all set? Any?
Yes, I'll have to get back to you on that.
I appreciate that.
I'll find that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I was looking for that as well.
Any follow-up questions, Mr. Vega? No other questions? I'll let you proceed, President for time.
Okay, so at this point in time, we have the budget presentation that we'll go through, and then we can take more questions, so hopefully it'll answer some of your questions. Okay. Yeah, can we see from here? All right. Was it in the presentation? Okay. Okay, so, good evening. We're finally to this part in the presentation, we have about, looks like 30 minutes to finish this part up, so, well, it's, it's not very long. So I just want you to understand, first of all, I want to thank the cabinet and all the, the team here, that, that, I call it my, the '25 budget team, that, that worked to put this together and go through this. But I want you to understand that, I think Tony mentioned it already earlier, that this is, this is a budget spending plan. We, we, we've known, like Troy told you, like Trish told you already, we've known for months what the budget is, roughly 227 non-net, and, and, I mean, net spending and 18 non-net, which is what was pretty much in the down to us. So what we've done, we've worked into backing into those numbers and figured out what we can do with those numbers and with that money, but understand that you're voting on generally three pockets of money, you know, the net, the non-net, and, and the, and the ordinary maintenance, which is probably non-net. So, but with that said, anything can be adjusted. So one line item is seen more out of line, or as we go through the year, we already mentioned halfway through the school year, we can, that's what we did this year, in order to save eight, nine million dollars, we looked at expenditures to date, we looked at the projected money for the rest of the year, and in some cases, we, we, Trish and I got together, and we doubled that amount, and it still was way less than what the remaining budget was. So we took that remaining budget money and moved it to another line, so. It happens all the time, happens every year, we make general adjustments as, as needed. So, with that said, we'll move forward. Yeah, over there. Whoop, too fast. So again, I'd like to thank the members of the, the team, the cabinet members, myself, Sharon Wolda, Deputy Superintendent, Trisha Boyer, Business Administrator, Dr. Moran, all of us worked diligently on this, months and months and months already. Dr. Lavaloy, Karen Spalding, Michelle Connors, Marcia, Surpa, Andrade, Andrade, Surpa, Jamie Langley, Kelly Jones, Dan Vigent, and Sarai Barros, Montero, and, and Ms. Jennifer Perez, Cecilia. I thank you all for your work on, on this. So, what we've worked with and struggled with all year is, what is the budget process? What are the budget drivers, and what's the responsible budget process? Understanding, with the exception of Dan, none of us have done this before, built the budget from, from the ground up. So the learning experience of all of us and a lot of work, but we, we managed to get through it. Next year will be a lot easier, and, and less difficult, but we struggle with a lot of questions, but again, at heart, she's a lovely little girl smiling, that's what we kept it centered and focused on for the budget and all year long in our work, so. That's what we do, we're here for students. So this 50, 25 budget process, so what we did was we analyzed prior year spending, as Trish mentioned already, we've gone back and forth through the budgets each year, and looked at what made sense and what didn't, and, 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 yeah, reduced amounts and added to some amounts, eliminated some things, but that's, that's what you do when you build a budget from the ground up. We rolled up existing costs and salaries in account of contractual obligations and, and inflation impacts. Sometimes, again, some of the things we'll, we'll talk about, like special education costs, you know, cost to educate multilingual, learning students, multilingual students, it, it's hard to put a handle on that, and then newcomers. Projected the cost for unfilled positions from school year '24. So again, those 150 positions that we have, people in it, we've been paying all school year, we have to project, taking those people out of the classroom as, as a primary teacher, educator, and putting in a qualified master's licensed teacher. Analyze enrollment and demographic trends, which you'll see in a few minutes, some of the graphs are really eye-opening, to say the least. Reveal departmental and school needs, reveal grant expenditures and future grant funding opportunities, which, as you know, grants make up a significant part of our school budget, and thankfully, because, you know, we're, we're essentially always underfunded. Ensure the budget meets the DSCA net school spending, and ensure the budget meets U.S. Part of Education and DSCA Maintenance of Effort for Special Education Needs. Over there. So again, the budget drivers for the Brockton Public Schools, we have a strategic plan from 2022 to 2027, so we, we work with that as, as, as part of our driving force as well. 2024 to 2027 Student Opportunity Act Plan, which we've already introduced to you, and Sharon and her team did a great job putting that together and introducing it to you. Mass DSCA Amendment, the Memo of Understanding, which, which we signed again last fall, and it goes into November of this year, and we're still, I think we have a final meeting on that in June, but, you know, there's a lot of things that are in that, such as the security for the high schools, and a number of things in, in that memorandum. Increasing enrollment, which is significant. In some cases, you see class size at up to 30 to 35, the elementary level for 2024. Shifting demographics, bilingual classes of, of, from the side over here, bilingual classes from 30, just like the 35 students. Some classes have 70 students at the middle school level, or 40 students, which is absolutely unacceptable. So the ratios of, of classes are 80-plus to one student for ESL at the elementary level. Unsustainable, obviously. Special education needs, increased enrollments, immediate need for additional staff, MSN teachers to open more substantial separate classes, and address compensatory services, and transportation So I'll let Ms. Marcia take this part for the BPS enrollment.
Way down.
Shifting demographics, bilingual classes of, of, keep it from the side over here. Bilingual classes from thirty, just like the thirty-five students. Some classes have seventy students at the middle school level or forty students, which is absolutely unacceptable. So the ratios of, of classes are eighty-plus to one student for ESL at the elementary level. Unsustainable, obviously. Special education needs, increased enrollments, immediate need for additional staff, MSN teachers, to open more substantial separate classes and address compensatory services and transportation needs. So, I'll let Ms. Marcia take this part for the BPS enrollment.
Way down. Good evening. So, this is the trending enrollment data. So from October first, two thousand twenty-two, we started the year at fourteen-nine-hundred-and-six-thousand. We ended the year of June twenty-three, fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-two. So over the course of that year, we increased by three-hundred-and-sixty-six students. This year, we started with fourteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four. That was our October one date and the data for that day. And then as of yesterday, we're at fifteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five, which is an increase of five-hundred-and-twenty-one students this year. Which way? Okay, so. Thank you. So just as an example, in my office, the enrollment office, we take our current class size. So for example, grade two this year. If you see all of the elementary schools on the left, the white boxes represent our general education classrooms. The lime green color is our newcomer classrooms. As you can see, I put, put numbers in red, so if they're hotspots. And I took that current grade two, enrolled it over for next year. So those students are now going into grade three. And as you can see, for example, the Brookfield School, those two general education classrooms are projected to be thirty-one in each class. There are some pretty significantly high numbers in grade three. And that is a result of the data at this point in the year for our multilingual learners. They have completed their WIDA assessment. And if they've reached a level of proficiency that allows them to be integrated, they then move into the general education classrooms. And this is to begin the year. Just as a point, this past July and August, we enrolled over two-hundred brand-new students, grade one through five. So again, this is the number just to begin the year. And specifically with regard to elementary, there are two-hundred-and-thirty-nine more elementary students now than there were this October. So again, this is the beginning point, and obviously, this is concerning. And Dr. Spalding will add.
I can't help myself. If you haven't yet fallen off your chair, I just want to make sure the community and that we all understand what the implications are. So that thirty-one, if we look at the Brookfield, that thirty-one, again, as Marcia explained, is to start the year. That doesn't include students that we are trying to include in the classroom. We are a district that's committed to welcoming an inclusive environments and to inclusion. And that's inclusion of students with disabilities into, who might be in a sub-separate classroom. It's also our multilingual learners who might be in our launch classrooms, who are doing partial integration into the classroom. Thirty-one's the starting point. So you start to add in students that we are trying to include. You start to add in projected students that, that will arrive in the district, which quite frankly is a wonderful, good news story. But it's a lot of students. And just that two-hundred-and-thirty-nine increase in the world, according to Karen Spalding, warrants an ad of ten classroom teachers. That's ten times twenty-four, about twenty-four students per classroom. And so I, I can't sound the alarms enough. Again, a wonderful, good news story. But more students means more teachers.
So, next will be Ms. Kelly Jones, but I just want to add to that. So, a year ago, maybe two years ago, we were struggling with declining enrollment and, and cutting budgets and, and cutting teachers from classrooms. It's, it's, it's a good problem to have. It's good trouble, but it's, you can see it's increasing. We, we need more teachers. We need more, open more classrooms. And, and quite honestly, we need more real estate. But we'll talk about that.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kelly Jones. I'm the Director of Bilingual Education for the District. It's nice to be here tonight. So, not only are, are our population in our school communities changing, but also the demographics of that population is changing as well. So, this year, as of yesterday, we now have five-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four multilingual learners in the district. That's over one-third of our population is multilingual. We ended last year after the reclassification of students at three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-three. So we had a significant increase. Since September sixth, twenty twenty-three, we have one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four new multilingual learners enrolled in our district. And you can see the graph shows this increase every month over time. In fact, in September alone, we raised from thirty-nine-hundred to four-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-three students. We are averaging a hundred-and-twelve new multilingual learners in our district every month. And their, their home languages are changing as well. Forty-eight-point-eight-five percent of those new multilingual learners speak Haitian Creole. Twenty-one-point-eight-nine percent of those new multilingual learners speak Spanish. And nineteen-point-seventy-two percent of those new multilingual learners speak Cape Verdean. So we are obligated to provide access to both content and English language development. And our, you can see it in the caseloads of our ESL teachers increasing dramatically.
Hi, everyone. So I wanted to take an opportunity to present the historical enrollment of our students with disabilities in Brockton. Over the last five years, we have seen a total of an eighty-four student enrollment increase in our pre-K population. So under IDEA, students are eligible to begin to attend school when they, on their third birthday. So we, that's where our pre-K program comes in, is the education of our three- and four-year-olds. At K to twenty-two level, and that's noted as twenty-two because under IDEA, students stay with us until they either attain a diploma or reach their twenty-second birthday. So under IDEA, students are supported from three years old to twenty-two. We have seen over the last five years a six-hundred-and-eighty-six student increase, all told, in the number of eligible students in grades K through postgraduate. And now to give you a, and I want to be clear, this is October one to October one. So it's comparing apples to apples. Now I'll turn it over to Jamie Langley, our Associate Director of Exceptional Learning, to give you a sense of this year's enrollment independently.
Good evening, everyone. So as Jamie said, our numbers have continued to increase. We started the year October one with three-thousand-one-hundred-and-eleven students who were eligible for special education. And that number has increased by two-hundred-and-fifty-one. And again, this is kindergarten through age twenty-two. So we are now at three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two who are enrolled or found eligible. And then looking at pre-K, ages three to four, as of October one, two-hundred-and-forty-five students. And then on, on June one, four-hundred-and-eighty-one students who are found eligible. So again, Jamie talked about it a little bit, but this means that since October first, there have been students who were identified. We then evaluated them after receiving consent, and those students were found eligible to receive special education services, which is why that number has increased. And then you'll see the evaluations in progress. So this means that we've received, or they've been, students have been identified, and we're somewhere in the process of either evaluations or we're scheduling meetings to determine eligibility. So again, pre-K numbers, one-hundred-and-sixty-two open referrals that we've received. And then K through twenty-two, we have received two-hundred-and-twenty-five referrals. So right now, we're at a total of three-hundred-and-eighty-seven referrals. Of course, we don't know until we get through the process of how many students will be found eligible, but that's just important to note as we begin, the beginning of the year, next year.
And, and just to back, to back up Jamie's comment, this was designed to give you context relative to the additional special ed requests, right? The population is growing, therefore we see an increase in the request to support them. And I will partner with Jen for the next slide.
Good evening. I'm Jen Perez, the Transportation Director. And I'm here to talk about the historical special education transportation. So, in the out-of-district special ed, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had seventy out-of-district students. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we had eighty-nine. And this year, we have ninety-seven. And we have nine students awaiting placement. So that's an increase of twenty-seven students out of district. The in-district, that is the Brockton door-to-door special ed students, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had a thousand twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we had twelve thirty, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-two. And this year, we have one-thousand-five-hundred-and-five. That's an increase of four-hundred-and-eighty-three students. Then the next is the students experiencing homelessness. We have, in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had eleven twenty-two. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we had twelve oh-two. And this year, we have thirteen forty-four, which is an increase of two-hundred-and-twenty-two students. Eleven eighty-eight students are enrolled, enrolled in Brockton, but either live in Brockton or live outside the district. A hundred-and-fifty-six we are responsible for that go to other schools but are homeless in Brockton, so they're a cost share with the district.
All right, hello again. So this will be brief because I think we touched upon most of the topics that I put in my slide. But, so my slide, basically, the purpose of the slide is to provide context while you're evaluating my budget, because I think context is important, especially in an organization this size. So I was trying to identify the, basically, the footprint. So hardware-wise, we manage about twenty-five thousand devices. And out of those devices, the majority of them are laptops, staff and student laptops. We have approximately twenty-two thousand laptops in circulation. The other, the rest of the ten percent, about two thousand devices, we still have desktops spread throughout the district. We have fourteen hundred classrooms and offices. All, most, if not all, are equipped with interactive displays, printers, document cameras, or a lot more devices. We have a sizable fleet of iPads, iOS devices, mostly in the form of iPads, specifically for the special ed department. And then we have a small fleet of cellphones for the district. I mentioned earlier, we have that Wi-Fi project that's funded through E-Rate. For the majority, we have a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar match that we have to provide. And then software, the software is basically made up into two categories. One is the productivity suites, which us, for us anyways, Microsoft three-sixty-five and Teams. And then the student information system, which is Infinite Campus, that comprises of about thirty-five percent of the software budget. The remaining budget is comprised of cybersecurity, data backup, and disaster recovery. So all the overhead that goes into managing an organization this size with all the technology. And then, so this is the hardware, the software, and then the staff or services. So between data, tech services and data services, which now is part of tech services, we have twenty-nine staff members. And DESI, so this is kind of the ratio I try to go by. DESI recommends one tech staff member for every four hundred devices. We've never been able to achieve that ratio. And, and to be honest with you, that's a, a really high efficiency ratio. That's probably a ratio I'd see in the private sector. We tend to hover around one tech person for every eight hundred to a thousand devices. A thousand devices plus is when it gets, it would become a bit stretched, to be honest with you. To get down to that eight hundred number is a much more comfortable number for us. And by comfort, I mean, we're more effective at supporting all the staff and students. So the, the ratio does make a, make a difference. Again, the one to four hundred, I even think is a little unrealistic. I came from the private sector. I was there for ten years prior to coming here, and that's probably what I was seeing there. Couple of companies I worked for, we had, one was a world-renowned golf equipment manufacturer. And we're talking Fortune Brands kind of stuff, global. And we had eighteen hundred computers, and we had thirty people in our IT department. So this is twenty-two thousand computers and twenty-nine people, just to give you some comparison. But, anyway, so that's it. Again, I wanted to paint the context while you're evaluating my budget. And I'll take, any questions? No. Oh, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Saraya de Barros Montero, Director of Community Schools. Good to see everyone. Thank you for having us. Very quickly, summer programs. You did approve, last time I was here, the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars for some of our summer programs. So we thank you for that. Still on the table is transportation that I had asked for. So it's a little bit over a hundred thousand right there for this summer. Okay? The next slide is the FY twenty, the rest of the FY twenty-five budget. Office staffing, three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand dollars. Please note that most of the staffing, they get paid through grants or through the revolving account that we have. So only two of us get paid through local funding. We are also asking money for level services, for instructional supply, for supplies, for instructional supplies as well, and also for printing. That's part of the budget. For Twenty-First Century After School, I had talked about that we get a grant, which is over a million dollars. But the city is mandated to provide thirty percent, which is the match. So the match for this coming, so that we can still provide the same level of programming. So the match for this year is three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars. And also, I am asking for transportation. So, because we do year-round, and we have seven sites, and we have to provide a one-way transport to these students. So that's a little bit over three-hundred thousand. I put it there, the, the next two line items that you see there, the proposed allocation for summer twenty-five, because we start the work next year. So we want to make sure that by March or April of next year, this is all squared away, and we can start doing the work, because there's a lot of people getting, working now. So we want to make sure that they get paid during this FY twenty-five for FY twenty-six. Okay? For the summer that will happen during FY twenty-six. And next year, just so that you know, the summer programs will start on June thirty, yes. But before that date, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So, thank you.
So, I'm not gonna read all these. You have these in your packets, but these are the necessary additions to our staffing that are not in the budget right now, that are not in that one-hundred-and-fifty positions that you've already approved to put back in the classroom. Again, replace the subs and parents with, with licensed teachers. So I'm just gonna click through these quickly because there's a lot of them. But you can see, a lot of them are special education or related to enrollment needs. There's really no fluff here. Enrollment, 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 class sizes, special education guidance, enrollment. So these additions are what we need to meet our legal requirements to educate Brockton's public school students. Again, more, same, either size or service delivery requirements, special education, IEP services. And this is why we're into such a high number for the compensatory services that we're already required to provide. Again, there's another page. You can see caseload management, special education referrals, IDEA, so. More, more of the same. Again, you have these in your package. So the bottom line is, you can see, that's where it's five million, nine-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, according to Trish. So that's a number that we need, that I need above. So that's a number that we need, that I need above and beyond the $226 million that is proposed for this city budget. So, the superintendent's request for net school spending, the total school spending budget request is $232,705,931. And again, that adds in these essential 97 positions that I just went through quickly, for the $5,918,123. So opposed to a net school spending allocation that you have proposed, again, from the city at about $226,787,808. So, non-net spending, again, we're requesting $19,500,000. Again, and the misconception here is that all this is transportation, it is not. 18 million is, it was transportation, actually, we requested 18.7. But the request is for the community schools, as well as the crossing guards, which is about 500,000. So, and again, the non-net spending allocation right now is 18 million dollars. So, with that, we can, we have a couple minutes for questions.
I'll open up the floor to any member, if you have any questions. I'll start with Representative Vega.
We do question, I just want to say thank you again to everybody for your work on this and your presentation, great job to you.
I echo that, thank you very much. You know, Dr. Spalding had mentioned, more students equals more teachers. And Dr. Cobbson mentioned, you know, real estate. With some of the moves we've discussed, a lot of the conversation hasn't really been about elementary movement. Another quote from Dr. Spalding that I enjoyed is, hey, remember that elementary makes up more than half of our total district. So like, so what are the potential space impacts that we see? Do we see with the growth of teachers, if we approve, you know, if this gets approved, where are we going to put them?
Great question.
I have rental space at home that I can make.
Excellent.
We'll have to do an RFP for it.
We are definitely crunched for space at the elementary level. And what that looks like, even this year, is we have, in some cases, music teachers who no longer have music classrooms, because they've been turned into classrooms, general ed classrooms, or sub-separate classrooms. We have art teachers who are traveling, we have a lot of shared space. We are looking at even more, in fact, I just sent a communication to all of the department curriculum folks, as well as the elementary principals, so everyone was in the know that we are looking at even more traveling specialists for this coming fall. We are absolutely packed. And even within the classroom, we have classrooms right now that have 28 students. I have a kindergarten launch classroom, so that's 28 five- or six-year-olds who are Level 1 or Level 2, in terms of their English language, in one classroom. And even just to navigate through a classroom with that many desks and children in it is something that everyone should experience. But then, the number of classrooms that we need in the buildings, that's what we're facing
Members, I would entertain a motion to recess, so we can enter into our regular school committee meeting. We'll take a five, six-minute break, and then we'll open back into our regular school committee, and then we'll jump right back into the budget process and ask questions as the members are still here.
Form of a motion?
Form of a motion.
Make a motion to go into recess?
Motion's made by Mr. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gomes, but this is a roll call vote, because we have two members that are remote. Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Representative Anna Oliver?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And myself, as a yes. We will take a five, 10-minute recess, and then we'll open to our regular school committee, and then we'll get back to our budget process. And the mayor will chair. Good evening, back to our finance subcommittee meeting, FY25 budget for Brockton Public Schools. Just a little bit of housekeeping. We will finish up our subcommittee. There will be a delay in our regular school committee. Once we're done with our subcommittee, we'll go back into our regular scheduled meeting. I just want to inform members of the public, if you are recording this meeting via phone or any cameras, you would have to come up to the podium and let us know that you are recording this, because it is violating our policy. So, sir, I know you have your camera there, I don't know who you are, but can you please come up to the podium and identify yourself? Because you do need permission to record this, because this is already being recorded Are you all set, sir? Thank you. Any other members of the public? Because we do have people here, and you can't just start flashing away, but you have to let the chair know that you are recording. Thank you. Motion to enter back into our subcommittee meeting?
Motion to enter back into our subcommittee meeting that started earlier this evening.
Seconds.
Motion was made by Mrs. Azak, presented by the mayor. This will be a roll call vote, as we have two members that are via Zoom. Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Vega?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Vice chair is a yes. Representative Oliver?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Cobbson, floor is yours.
Okay, so we completed our presentation for our school, for the school committee for the budget for 2025, and we were taking questions. If you have questions, we'll come up to the podium as necessary.
Representative Vega?
Yeah, so the follow-up to where we left off was, we heard mention that our enrollment numbers are growing. And I agree, this is a good problem to have to address. Our enrollment numbers are growing, we're also seeing that our sped numbers, our ML loan numbers, and our homeless numbers are growing. The question is, like, are we seeing, are they growing in proportion? Or is there a particular demographic or population that is growing at a faster speed than our enrollment numbers?
Thank you, Dr. Leboya.
Thank you. So I can speak to our students with disabilities eligible under IDEA. On the slide that the committee has from the previous meeting, what we gave you was that historical analysis. And for the, what makes the percentage tricky for three- and four-year-olds is ID, kids with disabilities at age three and four are the only group of children entitled to an education because of a disability. So I don't have a general ed population to compare them against. But to answer your question, in school year '20, or fiscal '20, we were roughly 16% of our general, 16.6% of our population were students with disabilities. As of the end of, or, sorry, on October 1 of this school year, that number had grown to 19.6% of the total population. If we take the June 1 report, we are now almost 22% of our population have students who are eligible under IDEA, and that does not include our students eligible under Section 504 of the Reaportation Act of 1973. So for students with disabilities, anyway, I would say the growth is disproportionate to overall enrollments. And homeless, just give me a few minutes to do the math, and I'll be back up.
I can give you the data regarding multilingual learners. In the '22-23 school year, our state average percentage of classified as English-language learner, meaning that they are entitled to services and supports, was 25.8. I did a calculation of June 1 enrollment, and we are at 33.77. So that is a significant increase in the overall population within Brockton Public Schools. And that's this year alone, and we can anticipate increased enrollment next year as well.
Any follow-up questions from any members? Mr. Vega, you all set?
I have a quick question.
Floor is yours, Mrs. Sullivan.
Hi, I was just going to add that with respect to the level, our enrollment numbers in elementary has grown significantly.
Any other members with any follow-up questions?
I have a quick question.
Representative Oliver?
For the bilingual classes in Brockton High, middle school, how many students are we trying to bring it down to per classes?
Can you repeat that, please?
Right now, we have currently about 30 to 31 students, right? In Brockton High, in the classroom, and middle school, we have about 40 students in the classroom. How many are we trying to bring it down to?
I would say we need to have it comparable to English-speaking peers. It's particularly challenging at our newcomer levels, our Level Ones and Twos, we have significant increase this year. So we do have, at the middle school levels, some Haitian classes that have over 40 in them, and we have a few classes at the high school that have higher than 70, they're being taught in lecture halls.
Do you want to provide the specific data?
So just a little more specific, Ms. Jones is absolutely correct, but if I just were to do a quick count of the bilingual classes at Brockton High, for example, that have over 32 students, which is not grand, but an average class size can be for our English-speaking peers. I can do 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Easily 20, probably looking at 25. And to the point, we do have some at 39, multiples at 37, 38, 39, one at 87, at Brockton High, at the Ashfield and Plouf, which are two other high enrollments of our Haitian-speaking strand and our Spanish-speaking strand, and the newcomers. We have classes of 35, 36, and 40 at both schools, 37, 31. So definitely a need. You saw the asks at the end of the presentation for content-specific bilingual positions, math, science, social science, for example, to meet the needs of our newcomers, specifically at Ashfield and Plouf. Additionally, because of the dramatic increase, I believe it's 48.5% of the newcomers to our community this year are Haitian-speaking, we've had to add a bilingual Haitian-speaking strand at West Middle School. So, as you know, we have two Cape Verdean strands, one at South, one at East, we have Spanish-speaking strand at Plouf, and the French or Haitian Creole speaking strand at Ashfield. And because of the numbers, we had to do a pop-up academy at Plouf this year, which was not ideal, but we did what we could with the resources we had to manage the influx of students. We are adding a full sixth, seventh, and eighth grade Haitian-speaking strand at West Middle School in the fall.
Thank you.
So, at this current moment, the majority of those classes being taught by non-bilingual
At the high school, those classes that have newcomers that are very, very large are being taught by a bilingual educator. The pop-up academy that we had to configure halfway through the school year at the middle school is not taught by a native-speaking educator, but we do have a paraprofessional, two paraprofessionals to support them.
And just one last piece of data, going back to the original question, we are not seeing the same disproportionate growth with students experiencing homelessness. So in going back to fiscal '22, it was roughly 7% of the population, '23 at 8%, and at '24, we're just about at 9%.
One last thing, Dr. Cobb, the amount that you're asking, 5.9, do you think this is enough educators with the increase that we keep getting of, like, bilingual students coming in, also the number of sped students? Do you think by probably the end of the year, we're going to have more increases, that we might need more educators in the future? Do you think that we need to have more, basically, educators added to this list? Job put out there?
Is, Representative Oliver, is that a statement or a question?
I didn't understand what you said.
Chair, do you think, do you think?
Hold on, are we able to put that volume up? More so?
Can you hear me? Sorry, my phone's going out a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, yep, I know. Floor is yours. Representative Oliver, the floor is yours. Now it's distant, we can't hear nothing.
We got the IT guy here, and we have problems.
IT man is here. He can help me out. He's like, I'm good.
Mrs. Oliver, can you speak, so we can see if we can hear you?
Sorry, I don't know how to divide stuff. Can you hear me now?
You can follow with your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes, proceed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was asking Dr. Cobb if we need to increase the number of educators that we need to post, for the numbers that we keep getting increasing bilingual students and also the sped student.
Was your question, how many educators do we need to increase by, to service these students?
Yes. Especially the amount of numbers that keeps increasing by monthly.
So the answer to that is 97, and that's what I presented tonight, between special education, multilingual learners, and the special needs staff, at 97 positions to accommodate.
Do you think we're going to need more by the end of the year?
Well, first, we have to fill the position that, the ones that you've approved already, the 150 that we have to put the job ads out for and fill those positions, but it's, will we fill them? I don't know. Will we try? Absolutely. But we need to approve from this body to hire additional staff that we need to service the students that we presented tonight.
Just for some housekeeping, if we can just put our phones on silent, please, thank you. Mayor?
So, I'm just, I don't want to be the bad guy, but I'm just trying to figure this out. So, the $226,787,808 is what we've talked about. It's the amount that we submitted to City Council. We needed to submit to City Council, because we needed to be able to do it, so that we'll have hearings in two weeks. I'm all for trying to get people in the classrooms, but where the heck does the 5.9 million come? We opine to Secretary of ANF, to Lieutenant Governor, the Governor, to Tutweiler, to DOR, that we were going to have a balanced budget. We did not need any state intervention this year. $5.9 million was not in the equation. So I'm a little stupefied on where we're going to come up with the 5.9. Are we going to make more cuts to get there? Because ultimately, that 5.9 doesn't exist. It just doesn't exist. Dr. Cobb?
So, the answer to the question is, if we have to, you know, that's the ask, because it doesn't mean that's what we will have to work with. We fully understand what the budget was submitted to the City Council, and we talked about with the state and with the city. We fully understand the budget that we had to back into to work with. But we're just making sure everybody knows that what we actually need to fund the district. We made it work this year, we'll make it work next year. Yes, we may have to do some additional cuts from other areas. We'll look at that $2.5 million that's a surplus for this year rolling to next year, and that $1.2 million for the school choice revolving fund, to help fund some of those that are offset by at least half.
The only problem with that, Dr. Cobb, and I said it sitting up here a couple weeks ago, if you spend... if you spend the surplus money, the one-time surplus money to hire people, chances are you're going to have to lay folks off because that's a one-time funding source that disappears. So, unless we do hardcore cost containment measures, we won't have the funds to keep the teachers in the classrooms. And so, that's a quandary.
Well, there is, Mayor, built into the, the Choice Evolving Fund will always be there and we'll always have School Choice.
That's the one, too.
That'll pop up to 1.2 every year. What we do as far as austerity measures for this year to have a surplus, that's how we'll mean into budget all year. Again, we're fully aware of what we need to do to work with the budget that we have.
Thank you.
Any other members with any questions? Representative Vega?
In a follow-up to that, like when we're talking about where we make cuts or where we find, so recently, DESI released some information regarding the positive growth of the Brockton School District moving out from a lower tier that actually opened up the percentage of students that charter schools could absorb. That number's dropped from 18% to 9% as a result of the academic improvements in our district. Does that, has that been factored into? So, is it possible that if we were to factor that in, that we might find some cash money?
Right, not yet because we haven't seen the numbers from the state for any kind of, you know, dispensation for those funds yet.
But that could influence.
It could, you know, going forward, absolutely. You know, 9% of a $226 million budget is 24, $26 million. So, that would be extremely helpful. But we haven't seen anything from DESI with numbers to dispensation of those funds yet.
Are you all set, Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Any more follow-up questions?
Thank you for reminding us of that. That would be helpful.
Representative Oliver or Sullivan via Zoom, any more questions?
I'm all set.
Ms. Sullivan?
All set, thank you.
Any follow-up questions from any of the members relative to the budget? Representative Sullivan?
Mr. Vincent, could I ask you a question? I was just a little surprised at the 25,000-plus devices.
Okay.
Anyway, whatever happened three or four years ago, do we have things in place till that cannot happen again?
What are you referring to exactly?
Well, there was a hack that took place three or four years ago.
So, there was a data breach about four years ago?
Do we have things in place that that won't happen again?
We have a lot of things in place that won't happen again. Our cybersecurity budget has gone from about $50,000 a year at that time of the breach to about $400,000 a year. I'm going to a cybersecurity class right now, actually at Bridgewater State. And the professor teaching the class, I explained to him what we've done since the breach. And he was very impressed. And he seems like he has a lot of accolades to his credibility. But we do a significant amount of cybersecurity, data breach prevention, data loss prevention. We have a lot of different layers that we did not have in the past. So, there's been a complete 180 of a posture of how to handle cyber attacks at this point.
With all that, that 25,000-plus devices, does it take more cybersecurity to cover all that?
Not necessarily. Most of the cost is in the complexity of cybersecurity these days. There's a lot of AI built into cybersecurity. But the, so the way IT works is it takes advantage of economy of scale. So, when you take a piece of cybersecurity preventative measures, the time it takes to apply it to 10 devices is the same time it takes to apply it to 10,000 devices. So, the quantity of devices isn't really relevant when it comes to backend services like cybersecurity. Thank you. You're welcome.
Representative Azak, followed by Representative Gomes.
Thank you. Mr. Vigent, just a couple of questions. So, I know at one point, we were offering the MiFi's in internet services for our students. Do we still have that? And is that built into the expenses? Do we still offer those?
We offer student MiFi's for use at home with the BBLA program, the Virtual Learning Academy.
Just the virtual learning?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And we don't offer any, I know at one point, there were discounts for our students as far as internet service and things like that. So, we don't have any programs that we work with?
Right. So, there's a couple of opportunities for parents or guardians at home. Comcast and Verizon both offer programs direct to the household. We can't act as a proxy for that. During COVID, the same entity that actually provides our E-Rate funding for internet services created a fund called the ECF Fund, Emergency Connection Fund. And that allowed us to purchase and supply MiFi's to, I believe at one time, we're doing 2,000 homes with the MiFi's being funded by the Fed, the federal funding source. That has been pruned down now to the point where we're just funding BBLA, but that's out-of-pocket expense for the district.
Okay.
So, we do not have a federal fund for the MiFi's any longer. But there are opportunities for parents or guardians at home to contact Verizon or Comcast and take part in their programs, their subsidized programs.
Thank you. And my last question is on the laptops. So, out of the laptops that we have, I know certain grades, the students are able to take the laptops home. It's the elementary. Can you just touch base on what do we do when we give out the laptops? You know, which grades are able to have the laptops to take them home? And then, what do we do with, "Repeat, I broke my laptop"? You know, it's costing the district money. So, what are we doing when it comes to our students and that expense as far as replacement? Obviously, the 22,000, we're probably factoring that in. So, I just had a question on that. Because I know years ago, we approved a lease. And I think Mr. Petronio at the time, I think it was a four- or five-year lease. And we're probably coming up to that, the renewal right now, where we had a certain amount of laptops that were covered under that lease. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I vaguely remember.
The lease has since expired. Now, we just do outright purchases. There's really, there wasn't a lot of benefit of doing a lease other than spreading out the payments. But since we've been, since we've gone to a one-to-one program, we're doing 4,500 to 5,000 devices every single year. So, if you did a lease payment, you'd actually be carrying four lease payments at any given time, which is the equivalent of just buying them. Because there really is no financial incentive for a lease. It just helps you spread out payments. But if you're buying things every year, it defeats that purpose. So, we purchased laptops. We are a one-to-one district. We provide enough laptops to all the schools for all the grade levels. Whether they take them home or not is an instructional decision. And the instructional cabinet members can discuss that. I know there are schools that take them home. We work with every school. We provide them with barcode scanners. And we purchased a software tracking system that when a school assigns a laptop to a student, they barcode scan the laptop and it goes into their Infinite Campus Student Account that they are assigned a laptop as well as in our track-it system.
Perfect. So, like our seniors, if any of the seniors that just graduated, they've returned their laptops and we have a record of that?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Representative Gomes?
Oh, I'm all set. Mine is for Dr. Cobb. So, just to clarify, because you guys lost me for a second. So, these positions, the 5.9 is part of that over 11 million that we had discussed and that Dr. James spoke about, correct?
Difficult to hear what you're saying. Can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah. So, the 5.9 million dollar right here, the critically-needed positions is part of that over 11 million that Dr. James mentioned.
Right, we reduced it from 11 and a half million down to?
To five.
Five.
And I know we.
Almost six, just about.
We discussed it earlier. So, I was under the impression that we were all in agreement that this is something we would be budgeting for. And I think we should. To see that we've cut it down from 11 to 5.9, well, I would love to see every position filled.
So, would we? That would certainly help us provide the services that we're required to provide for students. Again, understanding the budget constraints that we're in. And we are not going to spend that money unless we have it allocated to spend. You know, we will spend every penny that we have out of the 226 and the 18, but not a penny less. But until we can, you know, get approval and find the funds to spend towards that 6.9, 5.9, then we'll work what we have.
How limited would it be to work without these positions?
Very. You know, it's not just limiting, but it's legal requirements. So, we're not, we're not meeting, particularly, again, we're going to get into, Jamie, where are we now with compensatory services this year? Almost $6 million, I believe, where the money we owe, services we owe to students that we have not provided.
Exactly.
So, one way or the other, we'll pay either compensatory services or hiring the staff to provide the services.
All set. Any members with any more questions? Representative Oliver, Sullivan via Zoom, any questions?
I'm all set.
All set.
I have a question. Dr. Laboua, are you still here? Sorry, not picking on you, but. On the necessary positions, I see that there is a sped district-wide Assistant Technology Specialist necessary to meet IEP services delivery requirements. Explain to me what this person really does.
Oh, what they do is significant. So, assistive technology can be everything from a pencil grip to augmentative communications, speech-to-tech software. So, the needs of our students, it is actually requirement of the federal IDEA that assistive technology needs are assessed as a part of the IEP process, which means we explore what supplementary services or aids might be necessary for a child to access school or the curriculum. So, that can be anything, again, from an iPad where a student on the autism spectrum, who is nonverbal, uses visual cues to then speak and communicate with peers, all the way to adjusting the coloring of a handout to ensure students with low vision can access the material. So, that specialist not only evaluates all of the students who have assistive technology needs as a part of the proposal for the evaluation, but also will then service. There's not a ton of one-to-one service necessarily, but there's a lot of consultation to teams to ensure a student is accessing the necessary technology to make progress in the curriculum.
All right, thank you. The other piece is with these necessary positions, I mean, we all have the list. When I look at this, it's like 90% of all these positions is all through sped. So, knowing that we're not meeting some requirements, how, if, if, what is this going to cost us in the long run? Because I know, right, you know, we're at, I don't know, what's the number now? Six million? Is that growing every day? I mean, if we don't fill these positions, what is that going to cost us? Did we cost, you know, have that cost out built in if we don't fill these positions?
So, what I'll note is that is the assessment of compensatory services based on the current enrollment, right? As we look ahead to next year with potentially additional students, and I think part of the growth is, we've also been working, as you know, to build a multi-tiered system of support. So, we're caught in a bit of a cycle where an absence of academic support for students in terms of early skill development, by not being able to provide early intervention and support services, we see, I would argue, and it is my opinion only, that an absence of a multi-tiered model in the academic spaces, we are over-relying on special education to essentially be the only game in town relative to supporting students' academic skill. So, we had attempted to sort of infuse in the new model additional supports as a part of that multi-tiered model. But we are down to the point of not being able to consider that at this point and really just look at what kids need for the IEP that are being written. So, as we enter the year with staffing not being where it needed to be, with the accumulation of compensatory starting, as we look ahead to next year, just to remind the committee from the previous presentation, just year over year, I mean, from October to June, we've increased another 487 students. So, each of those 487 students have associated supports and services and needs that right now, we were behind the eight ball as the year began. So, heading into next year, to answer your question, we would be at significant risk of potential intervention from the U.S. Department of Education as well as DESI relative to our obligations to give the service that's in the IEPs. So, and that's where, I think you heard me say earlier, when we originally talked about what do we need, right, to service the students of Brockton above and beyond what we currently have, then the conversation was around 11 million, right? So, when we really pulled that back and said that is not possible or likely, what do we actually need to open the doors next year? What you're seeing are the positions necessary to open the doors and give just the same level of service to the kids who are eligible in June of what they need in September?
Okay. You mentioned DESI and the Department of Education. What does that picture look like if they have to step in? Or, and the second piece is, knowing that we're not meeting certain requirements, what are we actually doing to meet those requirements other than these positions that is critical at this point?
Sure. So, we, by not appropriating the appropriate money, we could be at risk of all federal funding through the Federal Department of Education. That's that maintenance of effort issue. In next year's proposed budget, we feel like we have satisfied that. What is now happening, and this is where I get into the sort of the level of DESI, is because we don't have the necessary staff to meet the service demands of all of our students, parents have now taken to filing complaints with the problem resolution system. And so, now, we're getting individual orders written to, in no uncertain terms, you must deliver this service. So, we are having to rely on absence of district staff on contracted service providers, often at a higher rate of pay than if we had the staff on hand in the first place. So, you might have heard us talk early in the year about our partnership with Catapult Learning. That is an independent organization who we are contracting with to provide services at certain elementary schools where we have a low special educator-to-student ratio. At Hancock, as an example, went months with no special education teachers. So, every day of not delivering the service, our staff are tracking and calculating how much time is owed. Now, when it gets into compensatory, the delivery of compensatory services, we have not, the district has not yet begun to write the individual service plans because we are waiting for a final vote on the appropriation for next year so we actually know what we're working with. So, I can't write a compensatory plan that says next year, if you were receiving reading support two times 30 in a week, we're going to make that two times 45. And over the course of the year, we'll make up X amount of time for misservice until I know if I'm going to have the teacher to be able to do that. So, one way or the other, to Dr. Cobb's point, these are legal contracts enforceable in a court of law a court of law between the school district and a family. So in terms of special education, we have no option other than to deliver the service.
So have we looked, you know, what those numbers would look like? And I know we're at 6 million, I'm just trying to see if we can approve this, if we can find money, like, obviously, it's going to put the school district in some type of financial crunch as well, because we're not appropriately funding school district to meet these, these needs. So have we looked at, I'm not sure if you have a chance to look at these positions and how many students that affects, like I said, you know, roughly 80, 90% of the, these needs through sped, and we know we have a huge problem that we have to address. So do we, do we have like a figure of what that looks like if this doesn't move forward? Because if we're at 6 million, you're saying we're roughly at 6 million, I'm meeting those needs, and these positions are critical, that's telling me that we're still not meeting the needs of these students in the sped part?
Correct. So for special education, they made whole, we will have, we would have to hire all of the 150, 100 so that are not filled right now, and then additionally add these other positions to meet the service demand. So if I, I can't answer off the top of my head because the calculation is that specific to the amount of time and how much the contracted hourly rate is, and again, we're basing those numbers not on actual service fee for service, but on the contracted rate in our collective bargaining agreement. So we can't necessarily pay more for our teachers. That's the baseline we use, so X hour at a BEA person would equal X amount of money. What we're going to have to do is things like catapult learning. I think in next year's budget, we have about 3.5 as a placeholder to make up for compensatory services into next year. We could, through discussions with the cabinet and Dr. Cobb's, make the pivot to hire special ed staff with that earmarked money to sort of, to try to resolve some of at least the teacher issues, but we are legally bound by certain class sizes and substantially separates, for example. So I can't have a classroom go over a certain number without adding additional staff. So unlike an elementary classroom, ideally at 2022, you can add more students, right, to sort of absorb that overage, and it gets, it looks like class sizes of 26, 27, or 28. I don't have the same ability in special ed. So with those increases year over year, what we haven't done is kept up with the staffing demands of the students. And so to answer your question, I'd have to go back and calculate the existing staff that we don't have, how much catapult is doing to actually lessen that potential liability later, and then add in, without any of these staff, what is the total volume of children that we're unable to service to be able to accurately reflect and give you a good number? Does that make sense? Because it's a moving target.
Yeah, it's a moving target. You know, if you can get that data, that would be very appreciated. The other piece is, I know we've had a discussion about this through your department, you know, we have a third bill, third-party billing that does our Medicaid, which is specifically through sped. Have you gotten any data on that yet, far as with those reimbursements?
I did hear back from the people at PCG who apologized, given a vacation that apparently had happened in the middle of our communication, but she is getting back to me with the requested reimbursement. So the request was how much through our Medicaid administrative and service program have we received through reimbursement for the last, I think we did four fiscal years?
Four years.
Yeah, so we're just waiting for that data directly from PCG, who's our partner in that space.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. If any other members have any questions for Dr. Lebois, Representative Oliver or Mrs. Sullivan via Zoom?
All set. It's a lot of great information. Thank you.
Thank you. My other question is, Mrs. Kelly Jones, I see here we have, you know, substantial amount of positions, you know, to address bilingual program. The other piece is where we've seen the increase, we've seen the data, wherever it is, and having 30-plus, 70-plus in a classroom, and here we are trying to educate these students not to learn, but also to speak English well. How is that, I mean, we all know we need these positions, but how is that hampering you to provide those services in those classrooms? Because if you have one educator with 80 students in there, who is she actually, I mean, she's trying to teach, but, or he?
Yeah, so we're obligated under civil rights law to do two things. One, to provide proficiency-appropriate English-as-a-second-language instruction and content, grade-level content, access to grade-level content. And so we, this, this budget request reflects both of those things. One, are we meeting the needs of our newly arrived students to our community to access the content and develop their language through proficiency-appropriate English-as-a-second-language classes? You can see the, the annotation says the new ELE guidance. The guidance says that we should be providing levels ones and twos, two 45-minute periods of ESL a day, and level threes and fours, one period of 45 minutes of ESL per day. And so this reflects the, the content needs, but also the English language acquisition needs through ESL of our students. And at the secondary level, we have classes of significantly high students, and in order to provide an equitable access to grade-level content, those bilingual classes, those bilingual staff will provide the content, and our ESL staff will provide the proficiency-appropriate English-as-a-second-language instruction.
So knowing that Haitian Creole is one of, it's the highest, I don't know if Dr. Moran is in the room, but how are we doing with addressing those students' needs to acquire those staffing levels? What are we doing far as recruiting to make sure that we do have those educators that do speak that language to address our bilingual population?
Sure. So as you know, we, as Dr. Cobb said earlier, we use SchoolSpring, a paperless applicant tracking system to cast a wider net. We have all of our postings for open positions on our website and links you write to SchoolSpring so you can apply. So we're looking for people constantly. We're going out to recruitment fairs, we're contacting colleges, we're using our student teachers and hiring them, and we're always looking to help people to, who may not be licensed, get their licenses. DESI over the last couple of years has allowed people to get emergency licenses, and the HR department has participated with a teacher diversification grant through DESI to help people get licensed. So we're trying to find people who are out there, but also people who might need a little bit of, a little more support to get finished, and over the finish line, we're working with them as well.
All right, thank you. The, the other component is knowing that our class size is very large. We know we need space, but how are we addressing that? Meaning that you have, I mean, you have 70-plus in a classroom. Is the building, does the building have one or two rooms that are empty? Are we totally full and you still have these large classrooms? And we, we need real estate to make sure that, number one, that we can fill, which we, you know, our numbers are growing, I'm pretty sure that we can, to decrease our class sizes. Have we looked at how much space we really need to make sure that we address, you know, our growing population?
So at the high school, I think we're going to be okay because of the facilities plans and the shifts that are being held. So if we have staff at the high school, we have space for them. The space issue is the reason why we are proposing to have a second Haitian strand at West, because the Ashfield this year was so full of, of students that there was no space for them. So that's why we, we opened up a pop-up academy at Pluff for a temporary period. We scrambled for reallocating some resources to have two teachers, but that does, that's not sufficient for meeting their content and language acquisition needs. So by setting up a, a second strand over at West Middle School, there is space and we will be able to meet both the staffing needs and the space needs of the students.
Okay, thank, one of the, I know myself and Mr. Vega, we've had this conversation about, and other members of this committee is to make sure that we have all the data possible, there's not enough data. One of the things that, I don't know who this is going to fall on, but one of the data is that I would like to see, receive is all of our buildings, how many classrooms are in each building, how many students are sitting in those classrooms, so that, you know, we don't want to sit here and keep taking students, and we know that, you know, our population is growing, that this body needs to look at it when we budget. Okay, do we need another school? Do we need another site? To make sure that we're not bombarded in having, you know, three or four programs under one roof. I will never support doubling up programs in buildings. I've said that clear. I, that's just my opinion. I think every program needs their own space in order to grow. I think that, this is my only opinion, that the school committee for many years in the district has approved numerous programs and didn't see where the space was at the time. And that was a huge disservice because we got rid of programs, specifically our alternative schools, that we have to address. So that's one of my concerns, and if we can move forward with providing a lot of those data so we can make those correct decisions, so. I'm kind of all set with my questions on the net. I'm not sure if any members have any more questions. Mrs. Azak?
Thank you. It's not really a question. I know a few years back, when I first came on the committee, we were actually 16,000-plus. So we had a lot of students, we were doing a lot of cuts and stuff, so class size was really important, and we were looking at that. So I know at that time, we had asked, we really need to see what the capacity is at our buildings for safety reasons as well. We don't want to pack them to the point where we're in violation. So we need to see what our, like, the occupancy number is as far as classes and number of students we can have. And I believe they looked into the fire department, someone had a list of that, or maybe Mr. Tobias, someone provided a list a few years back, but if we can update that, just so we have an idea, school's in the capacity, so we know where we need, where we have room and where we might need to expand other areas that you just mentioned as far as facilities. But thank you.
I, I agree with you. Any other members? Mrs. Oliver and Sullivan via Zoom, do you have any questions?
All set. The floor.
No questions? Well, I think that kind of does it on the net. I'm not sure if you want to shine a pawn on the net, and we can go on to our non-net.
All right, I think that pretty much concludes the subcommittee meeting on the budget presentation. I thank all of you for your, your great questions and your, and your engagement in this process. We, as you can see, we, we need to make some difficult decisions and to take care of the students of Brockton Public Schools.
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor?
If I could, this is a committee of the whole, which is different, and I support this, this is great. Attorney Bresnahan is here. I just, I just had a question because the process, when it's a subcommittee, is it's referred back favorable to the full body, right? There's a vote taken, referred back. So if there's no objection, Attorney Bresnahan, could you just give us some guidance on this? Because again, this is a little unique this year where it's a committee of the whole. We, we do have, Mrs. Campbell has coordinated, we have a special school committee meeting next week, we have the public hearing component, which is required by laws, it's been posted or will be posted in the Brockton enterprise, but could you just give us some guidance since this is kind of uncharted territory?
Sure. The, the agenda for the subcommittee's meeting tonight lists a discussion and a possible vote.
Yep.
So it's my understanding that it was contemplated that at the conclusion of the discussion, the subcommittee would, you know, formally recommend the, the budget request back to the full committee, even though it's a, it's a committee of the whole, it's still a separate public body under the open meeting law.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions from any other members? I know we didn't have it listed here, that I think we had it scheduled on the regular school committee meeting to take a potential vote approving the budget, but this is a subcommittee, so if any members wants to entertain a motion to approve the budget or send your, you know, what you feel that the budget is needed, as we look at here, you know, we do have the 226-787, which is our considered maintenance of effort, and then we have the budget, which the superintendent provided to us tonight, which is the number So I will leave that up to the members and.
Vice Chair, just, just personal, personal information, the 226-787-808 is the statutory amount, that is the statutory amount Trish, that you have shared with us in the past, correct? Okay, thank you.
Correct. Representative Gomes?
I would like to make a motion. I'm going to make the motion, and I'll explain in a second. I make a motion to request $240 million as the school budget for FY '25 school year.
Motion was made by Representative Gomes to approve $240 million for FY '24, '25, my correction, '25. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second, that.
Second. Motion was probably second by Mrs. Oliver. Do we have, we'll open it up to questions relative to the proposed request by Mr. Gomes.
Can I follow up before we?
Mr. Gomes, the floor is yours.
Okay, so I know the, with the Trish and Troy and even TJ have been working on, it's not the same amount as I just requested, but I did list out a few reasons why I requested that amount. As we can see, and as we heard today, we do need the money. We always talk about properly funding our schools, but it seems like everything else is going up except the funding. As you heard earlier, we had a listing for positions that was equivalent to over $11 million, and we had to cut it down to 5.9. And even that is questionable whether or not we can get that amount. I do believe in, Vice Chair Tony Rodriguez always mentioned this, we tend to fund our schools at base level, we need to properly fund our schools. If we need all the staff that we need to provide a proper education, I think we should do so. Another thing that seems to be very, so often familiar to us is that we request a certain amount, and then later on, we'll try to compensate for it, finding funds here and there, squeezing where there is nothing to squeeze. I believe we should plan ahead, and if we see that from now with the enrollment that we have, which I would say is going to increase over time, the funding that is there is not enough. We still have positions, as of right now, with the current enrollment that will not be filled, apparently won't be filled. Imagine what's going to happen when enrollment goes up. So for those reasons, and some of the things that I listed here, you know, we need 32 psychologists or people in the area, we only have nine. And even with the 5.9 that we have here, it won't fill all those positions, and those are required positions. We have, we see enrollments going up, all these services that our district is not able to provide, and for those reasons, I'm requesting $240 million. And it, it so happens to coincide that Superintendent, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Cobb, requested 232, and there's a difference of $1 million, which would be equivalent to the 11 million that we need to fill all the positions. Thank you.
Any members with any follow-up questions, comments relative to, but Mrs., Representative Azak?
Thank you. It's more of a statement. So we, I've heard a couple of times tonight, it's our legal requirement, and we're required to provide these services for a lot of our students. So, I mean, I'm going to support Mr. Gomes's motion.
Any members with any follow-up questions? Representative Oliver or Sullivan via Zoom?
I have no questions.
On the motion?
On the motion?
I, I echo this, I echo the sentiments of, of Mr. Gomes. I mean, we're products of the school, but we also have a fiduciary duty to spend money, and the opinion that we have given already to the state, and these are the folks that really scrutinize us for Department of Revenue. So to even go beyond the statutory amount by 14 million, I, I just don't know where that money comes from. I don't know where it comes from. I know Mr. Clarkson just came back because he had to go back to City Hall for an ordinance meeting, but I, I love Brockton High, I love Brockton Public Schools, my kid goes here, but I, I can't support it because as the mayor and as the chair of the school committee, you can't get blood from a stone, and that money is not there right now. So we will be facing an issue again next year where we bring people on, we can't sustain them, and we lay them off. So, thank you.
Any follow-up?
Yeah.
Mr. Representative Gomes?
Totally, totally understand, but it's, it's a similar case where you don't have enough staff, and then you don't budget for it, and then you have to be bleeding out to fill these positions or hold them for one fiscal year. If we budgeting for these positions now, we do a budget every year, so we should take account how many staff we need, so on and so forth, and budget for those. And just to give an example, for instance, with the sped, if we don't fulfill the legal requirements, we still have to pay money, and where's that money coming from? If we don't provide the services, they get the service elsewhere, we got to pay for it, or we have to, you know, we have to fulfill those requirements, or we have to pay for it. So might as well request the money, try to do something on our end, because the money has to be spent regardless.
Representative Vega?
I know it's weird for me to keep bringing this up, but do we have any sense of what percentage of our students are attending charter schools each year?
I would defer that to Dr. Cobb's, or any members of the cabinet.
I bring this up again because.
Attending what?
Attending charter schools.
Charter schools?
Yeah.
No.
Because, you know, as I said earlier, like, you know, we saw, I believe, $30 million this year, approximately $30 million going to charters. Because of the incredible efforts of our teachers, our academic. Because of the incredible efforts of our teachers, our academic improvement moves us into a situation where the cap of 18% drops to nine. So I do wonder if we will find some dollars in our own improvement, you know? So that's a piece, you know? When I hear what Mr. Gomes is saying, I think there are realities in terms of what we have to provide legally, but I think there are opportunities in terms of the improvements that we're making and some additional thinking. But I hear what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, there's a financial reality, and there's also illegally, illegal, we're going to pay for it one way or the other.
Right.
Yeah.
Any follow-up statements or comments from any members? Representative Sullivan?
Mr. Gomes, I'm trying to figure out where you got that figure from, the 240?
Yes. So if you... Yes. So if you look at the requested amount from the superintendent's office, it's... I just had it. Okay. So we had the proposed budget, which was 226, almost 227. And then if you add the 5.9 for the positions that they had to trim down, you know, to decrease the amount, that'll give us the 232. And then if you actually put the full list of positions that we need to properly run our school district, it'll bring us to 240 and some change.
Because I was under the impression we were at 226?
So yes, that's the proposed budget, but that does not include any hiring of these needed, critically needed positions.
What I'm driving at here, the 226 and add the 5.9, doesn't come up to 240?
Yeah, but this list was previously $11 million roughly. So we had to trim it down, trim it down until we could get to a, you know...
Do you have any idea where this money is going to come from?
Good question. We'll fight, we'll look, we'll do what we can, but we should start, you know, we talk about it all the time, we should start actually saying let's properly fund these schools. We leave in, it's the same thing as saying, oh, let's fund this amount. If, you know, we have an influx of enrollment, or if we need to provide the SPED services, we'll figure it out down the road, might as well say this and let us find the funds now. So when the school starts, we're already looking, we're already ahead of it. Does that make sense?
It's a good idea, but I don't know if it's going to work.
We can always try.
What do you think, Mr. Chairman?
You have to go through him, he's chairing tonight. Troy Clarkson is back here. If nobody objects, the city CFO. Mr. Clarkson, do you mind just coming to the podium for a second? Thanks for coming back tonight.
Troy, before you allude to the budget, I respect Representative Gomes with this proposal and making sure that we put educators in the classroom, because we do have a huge need. The 226, I sit in these meetings, we have a lot of meetings, and I'm just going to speak on straight facts. We dodged a bullet for the state takeover for the city of Brockton. We really did. And if the state came in, they would have gutted out all of our authority, the city councils, and then every contract, union contract that exists is basically gutted out. And they dictate how the city is run. And it's a five-member board, the mayor's one vote, and council president is one vote. And they send in their three powerhouses, and it's whatever they say. I know on the city side, there's been, correct me if I'm wrong, there's been 10% cuts across the board for every department, hiring freezes, spending. I totally support the 240, but I just want to make sure that, you know, it's eight million beyond on the superintendent's request of 232. And I know the superintendent and the cabinet, if we can give them 300 million, they will take 300 million, and, you know, our class sizes will decrease and so forth. So I honestly don't know where the city will get that extra fund, the funding to supplement that. And then we also don't want to make a decision where we're crippling the whole city as well. That means that if this body does approve that 240, that means that the city CFO and they have to go back to the drawing board to make sure where they're going to make cuts on the city side to present that to the city council. It's the request, we're a governing body, and it's, we'll take it to a vote when that comes, and if it fails, it fails. If it approves, then just be aware that the mayor does have the power to cut that budget right to that, back to that 226. I just want to make sure every member does know that he has that authority, so...
Mr. Vice Chair, just, you hit it on the head. We dodged it, but we're not out of the woods yet. We presented a balanced budget to the state, and that's why they didn't come in and take us over. Mayor loses power, school committee loses the power, Collette Bogdan gets ripped up, GIC is on the table, and city council loses the power. But it was a pint to us that we have to take care of our own business, and so we did. Collectively, we were able to get out of the woods for '25. But this would change everything, because this would not balance the budget, and we would have to go back to the LG, we would have to go back to the Gov., we'd have to go back to the Secretary, because these aren't the numbers that we've already given the state to say we've got our stuff lined up at least for '25. So, thank you.
Thank you. Troy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just briefly, I'd like to speak very frankly, but of course, very respectfully on the motion. Before I left to go over to the city hall to discuss with the city council raising sewer rates to support the sewer enterprise fund, Trish Boyer presented a consensus number, a number on which we've worked as a team for weeks and months to present to you as a consensus number. Just earlier today, I sat in my office with the director of the council on aging, who's concerned about her ability to provide services to the seniors in this community, because we necessarily had to cut her budget to balance the budget. Cut the seniors' budget to balance the budget to reach the consensus number that we all reached together. Now, elected school committees presenting different numbers is very common in Massachusetts, and you're advocating for the students, and that's a good thing. But to present a number that was not discussed with our whole group is deeply troubling to me, because it goes against the collaboration that we've put together for the last several months. And so I just want to express disappointment that that number is emerging tonight at this meeting. And for all of the extra time that my team and I put in over the last several months, to not at least have the opportunity to discuss it with you is frankly a disrespectful act to the people that have really worked tirelessly to save this city from insolvency. And that's disappointing. However, I also, from a purely structural point of view, want to be very clear about the consequences of this vote. The legal appropriation, the amount of money that the Brockton Public Schools is allowed to spend is the amount that's appropriated in net school spending by the city council. Should you vote a higher amount, that does not authorize the Brockton Public Schools to spend beyond the appropriation that the city council makes. And I want to make that crystal clear, because that's what got us into trouble in the first place. And so I don't want anyone to have a notion tonight that if you vote a higher budget, you get to spend that money, because you can only spend the money that you have. And that's an important distinction. And I'm not arguing whether or not those positions are important or necessary. I'm sure that they are, just as the van drivers at the senior center and the reference librarians at the library that we had to cut to meet our budget are all important to this city. We're just in a difficult time, and so I really would urge the school committee members to be mindful of all of the sacrifices that were made across this great city to bring this balanced budget to the city council. But also, please urge you to understand that you cannot spend beyond your appropriation. That's why we have an audit, it's why we have an investigation, and it's why we have a city that's been torn apart. And I'm just hopeful that we can move together, together into fiscal year '25. Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions, comments? Representative Oliver?
Representative...
Representative Sullivan?
Yes, I would like to say that I, we work with finance to balance the budget. I agree with the mayor and Mr. Clarkson and our hard-working CFO, acting Trish Boyer, and also Mr. Plam. And I look forward to their guidance to balance this budget. All of us, they're our finance people. They are the people we support. None of us have a finance background. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomes?
I would like to say I do appreciate all the work that you guys did. We had a meeting, we went over the budget. I expressed that I do not agree with that number. And then I had a few questions that kind of went unanswered as to, you know, what we're going to do with the influx of students. If the city can observe the amount, what then? Or with the increased enrollment through SPED or other departments? If we can observe the amount, what then? We still have to put up the funds for it. I did express that I don't think we had a proper time to say this, how much I think we should go for and why and why not. We, when we met, we were given the amount that we're given, we talked about it, we asked questions. I did express that I would not, I don't think that's sufficient, that's the amount that would properly fund our schools. I mean, everybody have their own opinions, their own understandings, they can vote it down, they can suggest something else, but I think we need a higher number to properly fund the schools and not have similar issues to what we had previously.
Representative Sullivan?
Just a comment, Mr. Gomes. I had agreed with you on the 240. I've had second thoughts. I don't think the city can afford it at this point, and I'm going to be a no vote on that. Would it come from...
Representative Azak?
Thank you. So, Dr. Laboue, we're legally required to provide these services. So what are we looking at? What kind of, what's going to happen if we don't? And our students are losing out on this, we're, these are services, we need to provide them. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that's why, these are services, we need to provide them, and they deserve these services. It's our obligation to make sure they have these services. So what are we looking at when it says it's our legal requirement?
I mean, we would go back to the drawing board, meet with our team, pull the special ed leadership team together, and talk critically around, okay, so if we were attempting to cap caseloads at X number, what does it look like if we move up a bit? We do have some earmarked funds in that 226 number, roughly 3.5, to support compensatory services. There could be a discussion in the cabinet with the superintendent that we could maybe pivot some of that money into necessary essential staffing and go back at it again with another fine-tooth comb. So we would, I would do everything in my power to make it work on behalf of the children of Brockton. So I don't want there to be an understanding that we're just going to let kids fail or languish and not receive anything. We have had to make some really challenging changes this year. So, and it's really painful. I want to be really clear. We have incredibly dedicated teachers and staff who show up every single day with really just overwhelming caseloads and responsibilities and are doing it every single day. So I don't, that team of people will do everything in their power to make sure that our kids are supported. I don't want there to be any misunderstanding there, that that's not, we don't have us got into this work to see kids not get what they need. What we would need to do is talk critically around what were the requests, let's go back to those requests again, let's reshake out the caseloads again, we might have to adjust some students and move classes and move sections to better create an economy of scale relative to service delivery, which we would have to do depending on the number that is sort of finalized here. But again, within that 226 is a contingency plan to support sort of compensatory necessities.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, thank you. And just to echo my colleagues, we do appreciate all the time everyone's put into this, and it's just, you know, we have the acting superintendent asking us, and the other professionals, we know what you need in your classrooms, we know what you need in your buildings, and we're just trying to get you what you need. But no, we appreciate everything. Thank you so much.
Representative Sullivan?
Mr. Clarkson? This is just a question on the state. They were talking about the conference committee. Is everything done in the state now? Is there a chance of more money coming?
As far as I know, I haven't seen today's headlines, but the Commonwealth has not completed its budget. So there will presumably be a final number, that it's possible, that additional funds could come our way. The way after July 1st, after the city council votes the budget, the way that would be handled is an amended budget would be filed with the city council, and I'm not going to speak for the mayor, but it is possible that if there's additional Chapter 70 money granted, that that money could then, that the school, net school spending could be amended consistent with that additional amount.
And this school committee can amend it to whatever that is when it finally comes out?
So...
Whatever the Chapter 70 finally...
The way that would work, though, the, again, relative to what I said a few minutes ago, the important number is the appropriation from the city to the school department. And so if additional Chapter 70 monies are available, then the city council could amend that amount by the amount that Chapter 70 was increased.
Okay. Thank you.
Representative Gomes?
I'll go back to Mr. Sullivan's point. You listen to the information, you take it in, you analyze it. The school is part of the city, and we do have to work together. I still don't agree that 226 is enough to properly fund our schools, but I would like to amend my motion to request 232, $232,705,931, which is the superintendent's requested FY '25 budget, which would include at least the 5.9 million for the positions that are critically needed.
Motion to amend the 240 that was previously requested to 232,705,931. I would need Representative Oliver to pull back her motion in order for the new motion to carry.
My motion to take the second on the first motion that you did.
Motion was rescinded. On the motion again, Mr. Gomes?
I make a motion to amend the $240 million request to the new amount of $232,705,931.
Motion was made, 232-705-931. Do we have a second?
Second.
Properly seconded by Mrs. Oliver on the proposed 232. Any further discussions or comments on the motion?
Just on the motion, Mr. Chair, again, I'll just echo the same sentiments. We all agree we want to give the kids and the staff as much as we can, but again, to go over the statutory amount doesn't, it doesn't help us, it will decimate services. I mean, we're at bare bone right now on the city side, school side, so, again, I can't support that, I can only support the statutory amount that's been presented to us, that we presented to the state. But to piggyback on what Mr. Sullivan said, if and when, after July 1, additional funds come in, you know, from the House and Senate and the GOV, then, you know, we'll do an amendment to the budget, but that's a big if, and that is after we have to pass this fiscal year. Thank you.
Representative Vega?
I will, I mean, it's difficult, this, when everyone warned me coming on, like, oh yeah, the decisions are never easy. You know, one thing that I will put out there, as many folks know, I also serve a role with Brockton libraries, and we are looking at drastic cuts there as well. So when we hear tonight that it's going across the board, it very much is. So I just say that to add context to the discussion.
Truly noted. Any further comments, Representative Oliver or Mrs. Sullivan via Zoom?
I think at the end of the day, we have to remember we're here to obligate it, to fund our schools. I think that we need to meet halfway, and I think this is the number to meet halfway, especially the obligation we have with the SPED department, or we end up paying all that. So we need to meet halfway.
Any further comments?
Additional money, this is Mrs. Sullivan. If additional money available, we can talk about adding it then. We can't go over what finance is recommending, and what the state, and the mayor has worked hard with his team to come with this number with the state. We can't go over the number, we could add later if more funds are added. There is usually additional funds added after the Chapter 70 money comes in, and then we can discuss it then. We do not support, I do not support the motion.
Any last comments or questions? This will be a roll-call vote, since we have two members that are via Zoom. Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Vega? Representative Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Oliver? Representative Sullivan? Mayor, I know you're...
I'm a no.
You're a no.
My vote is going to be a yes. We are at a tie. I know I've been in some of these conversations leading up to this, and other cities worked hard, but just my position, this is nothing against the mayor of Troy, but the school has been taking a brunt of a lot of the, when it comes to staffing, and I think on the city side, we just need to do a deeper dive. So as a tie, then we would take this again for another vote. I believe we can only do, correct me if I'm wrong, our legal counsel, we can only go three rounds, and if it stays into a tie, then it carries over to the next meeting to take a vote as well.
Well, you could do three rounds, and if it's still tied, ultimately, you don't have a recommended budget number that's been approved, so I think there's going to need to be some conclusion reached in order to move this forward.
Let me see. We'll go again. Representative Vega? Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Oliver?
Yes.
Representative, Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
Myself as the vice chair, I am a yes. Mayor is a no. We are at a tie again. Do we want to do a, Representative Vega?
I mean, I just want to, you know, clarify that we are, we're hearing that we're going to be limited in what we can do with any funds additionally voted upon. We also are aware that we have the potential Chapter 70 funds coming our way, we have potential funds gained from Brockton's overall academic improvement, funds that'll be coming from charter schools back into the school district. I think, and now, what I'm unclear about, and I don't know if this is a Troy question or a Ms. Boyer question, if those Chapter 70 funds roll, if those charter school funds are returned, is that money accessible to us for the purposes that are being discussed
If the legislature votes a number higher than what we have projected, then yes, those funds are available, but they're not automatically available. As I mentioned before, there's a process that needs to be followed, so the mayor would have to make a request to appropriate those additional funds and amend the net school spending appropriation before the city council.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Just a point of information, if we do vote, we get to a tie again. If we approve the 232 that's requested by Representative Oliver in the body, I just want to make sure that every member does understand, even if we did $300 million and we approved $300 million, that the mayor has the authority to cut it strictly down to the 226.7 that's requested.
And that's what was submitted already to the council?
That's what's submitted with the council, so even if we approve the 232, the mayor can cut that. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that if it's approved, then he does have the authority to cut it, and Dr. Clarkson and his team has to work with that 226. So we'll take our third and final round of the votes. Hopefully this passes or fails, and we can move on. Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Vega?
No.
Mayor, no. Representative Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Oliver?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
My vote is a yes, we are at a deadlock. Thank you, I will...
Just point of information, if we could, through you, Mr. Chair, to our legal counsel again, Kevin, so we met as a subcommittee, right? We haven't sent it back favorable or unfavorable. We're scheduled next week to have the public hearing, right, which is mandated, and then a formal vote, final vote, which will be the 11th of June, because a week from that day, we're before the city council for the budget. So would it be your advice or suggestion that we, we don't conclude this yet because we haven't sent it back favorable or unfavorable, and then continue this again prior to the public hearing? I just, I want to make sure procedurally we're doing the right thing.
I think ultimately, the school committee needs to vote to adopt a budget request number. Tonight's meeting of the subcommittee, as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, as a, as a subcommittee of the whole, it's a little bit of a unique situation, but ultimately, the subcommittee's vote was to refer a number to the full committee. The full committee, as I understand, still has an agenda item to discuss the budget, still has upcoming meetings. I would, I would recommend that the committee try to come to a number that it can adopt as its official budget request, but that's, that's the process that's played out here, and right now, we don't have a recommendation from the subcommittee.
Thank you.
That being said, do we want to take another vote on this, or do we want to take this up within our regular school committee meeting?
I make a motion to vote. Once more?
We'll take one more round. Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Vega?
Yes.
Mayor?
No.
Representative Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Representative Oliver?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
No.
Myself as the vice chair, I am a yes. The school committee has hereby approved in the amount of $232,705,931.
Not the school committee, the subcommittee.
The subcommittee.
We'll refer it back.
Yep.
We have, the subcommittee has approved and referred to the full committee net spending in the amount of 232,705,931. Well, I have to say why I would thought, so that would be referred to our full committee. Do we have a motion to approve the non-net spending? Any members want to entertain a motion? We do have to transport our students to school.
We also have to go into full...
I know we do have a regular meeting after this.
I make a motion to approve non-net spending at the, at the allocation rate of $18 million.
Motion was made for $18 million for non-net spending by Mr. Vega. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. This will be a roll-call vote. Representative Gomes?
I have a question.
On the motion?
I have a question.
Representative Sullivan?
Isn't the non-net $19,553,950?
The motion was made for $18 by Mr. Vega, so I'm...
Just point of information, the 18 was the figure that we factored on that was submitted to the council, the 19.5 is recommended by the superintendent, Mrs. Sullivan.
So the $18 million was...
It's the figure we presented to the state. Yes.
To the city council, and then we have to add more later if, if we can. Is that right?
Just through the chair, the hope is that we can do cost containment measures, we're going to be talking about RFP and procurement with the solicitor and Mike Morris in a little while. The hope would be we'd be able to come up with some factors that would give us some additional buffer, but at this point, we don't have that defined, so the amount that was submitted and was articulated to the state was $18 million for non-net.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vega. Repeat the motion?
The motion was to approve the non-net spending of $18 million at the original allocation.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That was seconded?
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. On the motion, do we have any comments or questions on the, prior to the vote? Representative Oliver or Representative Sullivan, do you have a question or any statements?
No.
No.
All right. Representative Gomes?
Yes.
Representative Vega?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Representative Azak?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Representative Oliver?
Yes.
Representative Sullivan?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Passes $18 million. Do we have any final comments or questions prior to concluding this meeting by any members? The floor is yours. Representative Oliver or Sullivan?
No, I'm all set.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
Properly made by Mr. Gomes, seconded by Mrs. Azak. This will be a roll-call vote. Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Azak?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Rodriguez, yes. Thank you.